Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm calling to order the Tuesday, September 13th, 2022 meeting of the Hayden City Council. I have a roll call of the members, please. Abby?
Council President Roder.
Here.
Councilmember De Priest.
Here.
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
And Councilmember White.
Yes.
Council President Roder, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I'd be glad to, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmembers, I have two changes to our meeting tonight. First of all, because we have not on item 2B, because we just received that and have not had a chance to adequately review that, we are going to eliminate item 2B approved with the August 9th city council meeting minutes until next meeting. And on item 5, new business, because most folks are not here to hear about that, I'm going to put that after our public hearing. So 5 becomes 6, and 6 becomes 5 on our agenda tonight. Any questions or concerns about that? Okay. You can... Yes?
I believe you need a motion to approve the amended agenda before we can start the meeting.
Oh, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
That added, I'd be...
For item 5B? So moved. Second? Have any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest?
Ladies and gentlemen, I have a proclamation before we go any further. This proclamation proclaims September 17th through September 23rd of 2022 as Constitution Week. In the city of Hayden, Cootney County, state of Idaho, I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Signed on this 13th day of September 2022, Scott Frisell, Mayor. The second item is our consent calendar. For those of you that may not attend many of these meetings, I would like to make a brief explanation of that. Our city does business five days a week in and out. Some of the things that the city does require, although they are normal courses of business, they do require approval by city council. You may also say that they require the consent of council. So on our consent calendar, we have the following items. Approval 2A, approval of the August 9th, 2022 city council workshop minutes. 2C, approval of the Hayden area regional sewer board wastewater treatment plant facility upgrades payment requests. 2D, approval of the 2022 Hayden Lake Marathon Event Permit Support Agreement and Loudspeaker Use Request. 2E, approval of the final payment request for 2022 Chip Seal Project. 2F, acknowledge that the purpose of the citizen task force has been completed. 2G, approval to enter into a contract with North Idaho Maritime. 2H, ratification of the August payroll. 2I, the ratification of bills for payment from September 8th, 2022. And 2J, approval of bills for payment. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Councilmember De Priest?
Real quick, and again, I was in earlier today and had a number of questions. The T A staff is extremely helpful, and I won't take the several minutes that it would take to get the answers that I received earlier. But I do have a question regarding, it's page 1 of 1, invoice journal report for city of Hayden. And I don't know if this would be Allen or Sandy, either one, where the Ramsey Road Row acquisition, Loblawley and Davidson, is that it? Or as far as the... Or do we have several more acquisitions along that to still go?
Allen is not here.
Oh, Allen left.
There are more acquisitions. There's close to 20 acquisitions, and I think we closed on just a couple this last week. And so there'll be more.
So is that the initial two, and we still have like 18 or so more to go? Okay. Thank you.
And keep in mind, those are primarily paid for out of a grant that we received. We'll work on that project. The city's portion is like 7. something percent of those costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I have one, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's regarding the item 2G, the contract with North Idaho Maritime. My understanding, is this a second phase of work? Because I know we had already done some replacement of bumpers on the docks. Is this an addition to, or it's not a duplication, is it?
No. It's in addition to, and that's a good question. Actually, Ed brought that one up as well. We did, we spent about $27,000 on putting in new bumpers all along the boat launch area, so it would be on the internal part of it. And since we're preparing to have an agreement with the county to have a... to have the sheriff's boat moored on the outside, there's some work we want to do on the outside before they put their work there. Now, that's going to require a contract with the county, and that'll come back to you. But this is work that needs to be done. Also, the dock is broken out of the outer edge. There's a metal piece that's broken that needs to be fixed as well. And then, and then they're going to replace the bumpers on that, I would call it the south, the south side of the right dock.
If it might add to that, I talked to Allen just prior to the meeting. I was down there before I came up.
You went down?
Well, yeah, I was thinking, that's $22,000, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
For what it sounds like is there. And Allen explained at the dock, the entire dock has to come out.
Yeah.
In order to make that repair. So I can see that would be a costly endeavor to pull that entire piece of dock out, weld the, do the welding, and then replace the dock. So it's more understanding why that number is what it is.
Other comments or questions on the consent calendar? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? So moved.
Second.
Second. Hearing a motion and a second, do we have any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Item passes. Number three on our agenda tonight is visitor and public comment. We would be happy to have you folks give us any public comment you would like to. If you have a comment regarding the residential multifamily zoning discussion that we have, please hold that till later. We'll discuss that later. If you have anything besides that, we'd be happy to hear you now. I have one, Mr. Thomas Schaefer.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Do I need to pull this thing farther forward?
No, I believe you're good.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, gotten to know me because I've spoken here a few times. So please accept what I'm about to say to you in knowing that I have the greatest respect for this body and the work that's done here. But I have to speak on my heart. So I wrote this one down. Usually I speak off the cuff, but this one, I want to make sure all my words are correct. So you know me for having spoken before you regarding my concerns about the Stone Creek North development and its impact on the existing wetlands and on stormwater runoff, which will affect property owners along the Creek Drive and Cattle Drive. Your awareness of the environmental impacts and the risk of stormwater runoff are thanks to the diligent and thorough work of a man, Mr. Paul Akiyama, who has spoken and presented in this chamber. I know Mr. Akiyama to be an honorable person, a person who actually has professional experience in these matters. He is eminently qualified and has the right to provide his opinion as a citizen of this city. A couple weeks ago, I learned that someone passed along an unfounded rumor that Mr. Akiyama was collecting contributions to hire an attorney to sue the city over the Stone Creek North matter. I further understand that the council went into special session to discuss this and that the discussions are secret and cannot be shared with the public. Feel free to correct me after I'm done if anything I've said here is incorrect. I also understand that Mr. Akiyama has declared to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council, that he has never collected monies to hire an attorney. However, at this time, the city's legal council has directed that you should not speak to him any further on this matter or information regarding the Stone Creek North development. So the project moves forward without involvement of Mr. Akiyama, who has worked so hard to find common ground and has appealed to you to work with all of us as a family. We are a family in this community. I'm really frustrated by these revelations. I have been enough of these meetings to observe how reticent the city council can be to act boldly and to represent the citizens who elected you. Forgive me for saying, but you appear to be cowed by the fear of what the developers will do, dare I say, a lawsuit. And it is, and it is as if you dare not breathe or utter a controversial word guided by one-sided advice from your legal counsel. As a citizen of Hayden, I want to say that these startling revelations motivate me to say that I do not feel represented by you. Of course, you dutifully and politely listen to me every time I speak here, but on appearance, your actions portray something entirely different. To all my fellow citizens who are here today, do you know that there is something on the order of 24, 25 new development projects slated for the greater Hayden area? That means they're on the books, they may not have been started, or they're in development. I ask rhetorically, do you feel that this council will listen to you if you have concerns about rezoning or impacts to your neighborhoods? Do you feel like this council equally represents you or just the developers? Thank you for your time. I can provide you this paper copy if you'd like.
That would be great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Would anyone else care to speak about non-zoning issues this evening? Okay. Public comment period is closed. Moving on to item number four, the commission report. As some of you may or may not be aware, we have some wonderful citizens that volunteer for commissions for the city of Hayden. They are volunteer positions, they work hard at them, and we very much appreciate their input. Tonight, we have an opportunity to hear from our Arts Commission Chairman, Ms. Lynn Frazan. Lynn, step on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, and good evening, councilmembers. Again, my name is Lynn Frazan. I am the chair of the Hayden Arts Commission. I'm just going to be brief. I just wanted to give you an update of what we are presently working on. We are a newer council, all new members in January of this year. So we are treading slowly, and we want to make sure that we do things well.
Lynn, how many people are on the commission now?
About four.
Thank you.
So what we are presently working on is a project called Come Together Bench Program. And what this entails is we are, we have worked with Abby and Mr. Satterling, and we looked at several places along government way for places to put benches that would be more artistic to add to the livability of the downtown corridor, the future downtown corridor. And so we are starting with one, the first bench, and we're looking for donors in the community. We're not going to be using taxpayer dollars to do so. And we put out a call to artists with specifications and criteria for these, for these benches. The max that we are willing to, we're looking at a budget of $5,000 per bench. And as I said, we were, we worked really hard, along with Abby, to put together context, bench criteria, such as, you know, they should be comfortable, able to seat three adults, making it, you know, family-friendly, but also, you know, they have to be usable. But also with, the main thing was, we really wanted to make sure that they reflect Hayden, you know? We don't, we don't want to become other cities. We want to show the specific things about Hayden, you know, and spotlight that in our art. So that is our, our main project right now that we're working on. And then the next thing that we're looking at is possibility of artwork on Fourth and Honeysuckle. There is a retaining wall that is sort of an eyesore, and we're possibly thinking of some art to make it that more palatable. And the other, the last thing that I want to talk about was artists in the gallery. We do, for citizens who may not know, we feature, we call it art gallery, but it is actually in the hallway. We feature artists from, from the community, and they're able to display their art for a period of one quarter of the year. And, and we're actually thinking of having some, having some... Oh, gosh, I lost my thought, care of that. We'd like to maybe have some meet and greets for the, for the artists when they first open their shows. But that is pretty much what we're working on right now, and if you have any questions, just let me know.
Councilmembers? Abby, go ahead.
Lynn, I was just going to ask if you could expand on what the call that we're putting out is for. Is it for the, for people to submit?
Oh, yes.
Their renderings, or is...
Yes, I'm sorry. A little nervous. Sorry. So what we're doing is we're calling out to local artists for commissions, requesting artists to submit design ideas for Come Together Public Art Bench Program. And we're seeking designs that are original alternatives to traditional public street benches with a theme that is Hayden-centric.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember White?
Yeah, thank you so much for all the work you're doing on the commission.
Thank you.
I think that's really great. I was just wondering about how, how you were doing the call to artists. How's that being publicized?
We were thinking of putting it in, I believe, on social media, and Abby can correct me if I'm wrong. We were, there are several other venues that we can use. What was the name of that other?
There's a few publication, art publications that we are going to reach out to, and we have some contacts to other art groups that we are going to reach out to, as well as put it on the city website and in the city newsletter, and then do a press release to all of our media contacts, including radio stations.
Thank you for the same. Okay. So does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Okay.
Other questions or comments from other councilmembers? I got one.
Sure. Are you, is the Arts Commission willing, if this bench project takes off, willing to expand that into our parks?
We hadn't, this is our first project as a commission, so we're, we're just trying to get it off the ground. We're doing, we have five slated that we want to do. We're doing the first one right now and seeing how it goes, and then, once that one's done, we'll have that experience to go off of. And definitely willing to look into that, but just getting our feet wet right now with this.
And when, if somebody purchases one of the benches, it's about $5,000, is that, did I hear that right?
Yes, we're trying to go for the budget of no more than $5,000 per bench.
Okay. Does their name, family name, whatever they have on there, is it forever? Or, I mean, five years, 10 years down the road, can somebody else buy it and have their name put on it as well?
That is not something we've even entertained. We just thought it would just be whoever paid for it, it would, the placard would, would, you know?
I was going to, can I add in? The program right now is for seeking donations for the bench. So we're looking for private donations from businesses, individuals, per bench. And so that's, that would be, whose plaque would be on it? So it would be theirs that they're purchasing, it would be them donating funds for a specific bench.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, I get it. Thank you.
Councilmember White?
But along those same lines, if somebody wanted to sponsor a bunch, a bench and say dedicated in memory of so-and-so.
Of course.
They could do that.
Of course.
There will be a plaque with every bench.
Very nice.
Other, other questions or comments? Ms. Frazan, thank you very much. We appreciate it, and we appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five. We have a public hearing tonight regarding the residential multifamily zone map. I believe Ms. Dawn Phillips is, is our presenter for this this evening. Yeah. Members of council, when we, when Ms. Phillips gave a similar presentation to Planning and Zoning Commission, one of the things that extended the length of time on it was the commission asking questions during her presentation. I would appreciate it if you, if councilmembers would take notes and ask questions at the conclusion of the presentation.
Before the proceedings and within the hearing?
Okay, thank you.
As Dawn is preparing for the members of the public, I would like to let you know our procedures for a city-initiated public hearing. First of all, our staff will present. Next, our council will ask our staff questions. Then we will call upon the public for comments. The council will then ask the public any questions that they may have. We will close the hearing and then begin deliberations.
It's expected to change. Take a hand in the towel.
Hog it, come on, man. Get rid of that.
These are public comments that came in from the memo that I sent you and before tonight. They're just...
Mr. Anderson, the, I would appreciate it. Unfortunately, this was the wrong form that you filled out. We did have two back there. I apologize for that, but if you wouldn't mind grabbing the other form and filling it out, I would appreciate that.
So this is the final kind of step in this process. It's been ongoing for a while. So this has a number, PZE 220092, only because it's the way we're tracking it in our municipal So just as a bit of background, in November of 2020, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan was approved by the city council. Imagine Hayden's long-range plans were approved in December of 2020 and in January and February of 2021. And then the Title 11 update was approved in April of 2021. That update took 22 chapters of the Title 11 Zone Code and smoothed it down into eight chapters. It eliminated a lot of duplication and a lot of misinformation that was contradictory to each other in part of those amendments as well. But the thing that it affected most here tonight was that it removed the design standards for residential multifamily, and it added tuning designations of mixed residential and mixed use. Again, it removed those redundancy and conflicts. It was anticipated that there would be a citywide zone map amendment. It was noticed to property owners in the spring and summer of 2021, and that did not happen. The city council listened to the folks that they were hearing from, and they said, wait a minute, hold on, stop. And so they, we added back in the design standards for the residential multifamily that was taken out previously with an interim ordinance for one year. And that, by Idaho State statute, cannot be extended, and it expires on September 28th of this year. So then we had workshops with planning and zoning, and city council looking for, staff was looking for direction on what we were going to do. And we were directed to migrate the lots into the zone designations that existed without the residential multifamily zone. So we were kind of given a task to look at the existing uses. And staff looked at those existing uses and proposed zones based on those existing uses, tried really hard not to create spot zones. And then, in an effort to completely remain completely transparent, we invited every one of those 551 property owners to a town hall meeting at City Hall. That was held in July of 2022. We had really good communication with property owners. And then we noticed each and every one of those property owners, again, for a public hearing with planning and zoning. We also put up 11 by 17 notice boards in front of all of those properties, and when property owners took them down, we put them back up. So, or folks took them down, not necessarily property owners, but they went back up, and we paid attention to that. It was also noticed in the paper. So Idaho State statutes only requires the noticing in the paper, but the city council wanted us to be transparent and keep everybody involved in this process. So we did that. That public hearing was held with the planning and zoning in August of 2022. Then we did a second notice of all of those same people, another mailing out, another noticing of properties that went up, and another notice in the paper for this hearing tonight. The staff review has been out on the city's website in its entirety for pretty close to six weeks at this point. So the zone map amendment affects those parcels that are highlighted in green. Those are the residential multifamily parcels that exist in the city. So I'm kind of wanting to pause because public comments need to be directed based on standards of approval that the council will use to base their findings on. So if you don't have one of these in the audience, can you raise your hand? And the council has them all as well? These are the four standards of approval, and we will go through them as a summary of the staff review. The staff review is quite lengthy, I understand that, but there are 551 parcels. We could try to break up the staff review, kind of... We can try to break up the staff review, kind of conglomerate it together in accordance with the proposed zone and then kind of the subzones that fit within that, and why staff suggested the zones that they're going to. So, in, for the analysis, "The commission shall consider the existing zoning district or regulations and may recommend approval, conditional approval modification or denial of the proposal, or the commission may defer action until the completion of such studies or plans." So we're recognizing existing conditions for 99% of the proposals that are in front of you or the proposed zone maps that are in front of you. And so staff did not believe additional studies or plans are necessary, and neither did the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the City Council may impose conditions upon rezoning where such conditions are required to ensure that the proposed uses of the area are consistent with the community needs and its public health, safety, and general welfare. Planning and zoning commission may recommend conditions upon rezoning for the City Council. So there are six or seven properties that we looked at as the staff looked at it that believe that there are conditions that should be addressed as part of zoning development agreements. And in your staff packets, we included a draft zoning development agreement that kind of identifies in general what those will look like when they come back to you, should this be approved. So amendments to the zoning map and zone text shall be in accordance with the future land use map and the goals and policies found in the Hayden Comprehensive Plan. So general information related to the Comprehensive Plan was provided beginning on page four of the staff review and in more detail in Appendix. It's important to note that the Comprehensive Plan is, it defines a general vision and a roadmap for the future. That the plan is generalized, comprehensive, long-range, not stagnant, and not a zoning ordinance. And the plan does not weight any one part of the plan as having more importance than any other part of the plan. So visions, goals, policies, and actions. Goals and policies were reviewed for each subset of the zone map amendment. And actions are not generally reviewed as part of a zone map amendment because you're looking at the future land use map and the goals of the policies. However, this is a city-initiated zone map amendment, so I would be remiss if we didn't look at action number one and action number three. Action number one says that in order to put the Comprehensive Plan basically in action or part of the process is to revise the zoning and subdivision codes to address the Comprehensive Plan land use directives regarding future land uses and amend the codes accordingly. And action number three says that you want to evaluate the residential density ranges. So therefore, you want to amend the zoning and subdivision codes to address residential density ranges in accordance with the future land use designations in the Comprehensive Plan. And then the fourth standard is to amend the zoning map and zone text to align with the zone district's purpose and intent, and we review each of those under each subsection. So, every zone map amendment, you kind of do a general infrastructure analysis to see if you have what you need. So impact to services shall be reviewed at the time of individual development projects. Because remember, we're not changing anything, and they're not asking to, you know, change anything on their property as you would with a zone map amendment for a specific project. We're recognizing existing conditions for 99% of this. Water district reviews will serve letters and/or approvals of construction plans shall be required at the time of future development of lots from Abendale Irrigation District, Hayden Lake Irrigation District, North Cootney Water and Sewer District. A dry utility shall be installed underground within, within any future development in accordance with city code. And sewer infrastructure shall be constructed in conformance with the City of Hayden sewer master plans, state laws, city sewer policies, standards, and tech memos. Okay, you guys are not making nearly enough noise. Just about here, a pin drop. It happens. Future development shall meet the requirements and pay the appropriate fees for the Northern Lakes Fire Protection District and Cootney County Emergency Medical Services. This is in here primarily with the appropriate fees because Northern Lakes Fire Protection District has review fees for many of the non-residential reviews, as well as subdivision construction plans. So they would be having review fees, but the noticing for this at the very beginning for planning and zoning was prior to the city's beginning to charge for impact fees for fire and EMS. So we didn't want to miss that in that transition that was occurring. Dedications of required right-of-way and granting of easements. Construction of roadways shall be in accordance with the transportation plan and all the docked studies and tech memos. Stormwater, people think that roads are just pavement, but they're not. There are curbs and there are sidewalks and there are pedestrian ramps, bike ped facilities, corner radiuses. Those all are included as part of those developments come forward. Lots shall have access to internal streets within future projects only because we're really trying to reduce the accesses onto our collectors and arterials to reduce impacts. And mailbox location shall be on internal local streets as well. So, residential suburban has minimum lot sizes of half an acre. You'll notice that the front yard, side yard, rear yard, and flanking street setbacks, flanking street setbacks are the same no matter what zone you're in, 15 feet. The number before the colon is the setback for the primary structure. And the number after the colon is the setback for an accessory structure, shops. Any of your outbuildings, those are your accessory structures. Really, the only difference between residential suburban and the other residential zones is that the side yard setback and rear yard setbacks are 10 feet for the primary as well as for the, side yard is, primary is 10 feet as well as the accessory structure, and the rear yard is 10 feet. So it's a wider, it's a bigger setback, obviously, because residential suburban are bigger lots. And residential suburban provides for single-family residential on larger lots with minimal agricultural uses. So the, when we did the, before we did the town hall meeting, we identified these four lots to go to single-family residential. Kind of a buffer between the residential suburban that is south of them on Chateau and the commercial that is north. But they came to the town hall, all, well, three of them came to the town hall meeting and basically said that, no, they, they really wanted to stay residential suburban. And then the fourth property owner called later and said, yeah, he agreed that they wanted to stay residential suburban. And it's contiguous to residential suburban directly to the south. It meets all of the requirements. And so that's why it's proposed to go to residential suburban. I'm not gonna read all the goals and policies. I believe that City Council has had ample time to do that. If you want me to go over them, I can. It's your choice. So this is a quirky little piece of property next to Sun Air Estates. We originally kind of didn't realize where it landed in conformance to this manufactured home or that it was even really part of the Sun Air Estates manufactured home park. Manufactured home parks can be in every zone, or they exist in every zone in the city. They're considered non-conforming uses today, mostly because they aren't on lots. They're on leased spaces for each of those residential areas. And the rest of the park in this area is residential suburban. So we proposed picking up this little bitty 1,700 square foot piece and pulling it into the rest of the park, also residential suburban. It's only got 4.4 feet of frontage on Wyoming, and it gets its access from internal to the park. Single-family residential. So, single-family residential is a zone that provides for the classic Hayden neighborhood where single-family homes are, smaller lots are permitted. Accessory dwelling units are permitted, but two-family dwellings are not. And so notice that side yard setback, 10 feet for the primary, about 5 feet for the accessory. That's different from the residential suburban. And the same thing with the rear yard, but the front yard is the same, and so is the flanking street. Very similar as far as the setbacks go and how they look to somebody that's driving by. So, single-family residential, we kind of broke these up into how they are. And so these properties, those properties within an existing completely built, single-family residential subdivision with minimum lot sizes of 8,250 square feet, staff proposes that the following subdivisions are to be zoned, single-family residential. So that means that they, all, all the lots have houses on them with the usual accessory structures within the entire subdivision, and all of the lots meet the minimum requirements of the residential, single-family zone. So that would be Hayden Orchards, which is up here off of Peachtree. Half of that subdivision is already, single-family residential, and this would just bring the other half of it all to be the same throughout the whole zone, the whole subdivision. The Estes subdivision, which is directly south of that, is also all single-family, so it would kind of line up those two zones together. Shaw subdivision, that's down here behind Dairy Queen. Those have been houses forever. Probably gonna be houses for a long time to come, and they're all single-family, and they're on good-sized lots. D Court is down here off of Reed Road, just south of Hayden Avenue. Cricket Estates, it's tugboat lane. It's a private road that goes back in there. That road is actually in an easement, which is why those lots actually meet the minimum lot size of 8,250. And so, that's why that is. And then F is Balzer, and Balzer's kind of a funny, a funny little subdivision. It created all of the lots on the north end of either side of the north street. Those lots are all big enough to have duplexes on them. They're in residential multifamily, and they created homeowners association, which they didn't really need to have, but they chose to have one. And their HOA effectively said, we don't want duplexes in our single-family, which is what we heard from Imagine Hayden. Most folks don't really like those duplexes mixed into their all-single-family residential area. And so they, basically, their HOA effectively did not allow them to build duplexes in that northern area. So each one of those lots are on a lot of about 9,900 square feet or a little larger, and each one of them is a single-family residence. That's why we're proposing. And then the goals and policies for this section are found on page 12 of the staff review. So those properties where the location of the property is adjacent to or surrounded by other similar land uses of single-family residential structures and the usual accessory structures, the lot is 8,250 square feet or greater, and the lot is not within a plotted subdivision. Staff proposes the lot to be zoned, single-family residential, and those goals and policies begin on page 14. So everywhere that you see kind of this turquoise blue highlighting, we are suggesting that those go to R1. Going from residential multifamily to single-family residential. Some of them are on larger lots. Part of the reason that we suggested to go to a single-family residential is because should they have a project in the future that, if they wanted it to develop at a higher density than single-family residential, then they would need to have a plan to figure out how they were going to develop it and bring it forward as a zone map amendment to City Council. But today, talking to a good chunk of those, they didn't have ideas, and they were, they were pleased with the choice. Mixed residential. So mixed residential is just a different kind of, single-family residential. It's a zone that provides for a range of residential structures, including, single-family detached, two-family and three-family dwelling units. That two-family could be a duplex, could be a twin home and a tri-home, which are single-family that are attached. They own the land under the house. So it's just a different kind of look. Very similar, front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks are a little, a little different. Rear yards are pretty darn similar. Flanking streets, again, 15. Just allow for a smaller lot and a smaller house on the lot. Should that be the choice. They could be larger lots, larger houses, just they have smaller minimums. So those properties within an existing, completely built, single-family residential subdivision with minimum lots less than that 8,250 square feet, staff proposes the following subdivisions to be zoned, mixed residential. So the question arose, both of planning and zoning and by property owners, if you have a subdivision that has a part of the subdivision that, that is, meets that 8,250 square foot minimum, but you have a part of the subdivision that does not, why can't we zone it kind of a little bit of both? And the direction from council was to not create spot zoning. And so we looked at subdivisions kind of as the whole. And if the whole subdivision met the, kind of the, the basic guidance of one or the other, that was the one that we went to. And so Stinson Estates has about, it's a little over, over half. It's a little over half. Not quite that close to 60% number of lots that don't meet the 8,250 square feet. And so that's why staff is proposing it to go to mixed residential. B, for Camp Court. It, it's been, was commercial for a while, and then it went residential multifamily, and now we're suggesting mixed residential because, again, those lots are too small. They're only two corner lots at the far northern end that are larger than 8,250 square feet. All the rest of them are smaller than that. Tyler Avenue subdivision is C. Tyler is a quirky subdivision. If you ever have an opportunity to drive down it, it's one of the, kind of one of the older subdivisions in town. It's almost all, single-family residential. However, it does have two duplexes kind of mixed into the middle of those, single-family, and it has one fourplex at the end. And that fourplex takes up almost the whole lot, so it doesn't have a lot of ability to grow or add on to. And we have reached out and have not heard from a property owner of that piece of property. So we're proposing it to go to mixed residential. It's an anomaly. It will become non-conforming. We tried really, really hard not to have any of those. Marigold Meadows is D. It's like directly west of D Court. D Court and Marigold Meadows were built about the same time. D Court has lots that are meet that 8,250 square foot minimum, and Marigold Meadows does not. Same reason that Camp Court didn't. And then Lauren Estates. Lauren Estates has got the same kind of thing that Stinson Estate has going on. It has a few of one and a few of the other, and it's kind of a hodgepodge. And so, again, to create, not create a hodgepodge of zones in there, staff is proposing mixed residential. Okay. So where there are existing duplexes, the only zone designation in the City of Hayden that allows for a duplex is mixed residential. So where there are existing duplexes, then it makes sense to go to mixed residential. That would be up off of Jaden Court, off of North Government Way. It would be Camp Court South. Those were all built as duplexes. Then one person came in and bought them all, and condo-plotted them all. So now there's single-family ownership of each lot, but because the building structure itself was a duplex, it fits in mixed residential. And then C is Eileen Estates. That's off of Hayden Avenue. There's a vet clinic kind of in the front and a fitness place to the west, and behind that are duplexes. The lot immediately on Eileen Estates, there's one of those duplexes that actually is in the commercial zone. But again, we weren't changing zones that weren't residential multifamily, and so we did not include that as part of the changes here. So for those properties not within a plotted subdivision where the existing use is a duplex or a triplex. Because remember, triplexes are not really anywhere, but they're really closest to a tri-home construction or do, or due to a specific use agreement or where they are in location. So 475 West Lacy Avenue, that's kind of directly west of the Northwest Swiss Building out there by the Hayden Lake Irrigation District Tower. There is a triplex, and that's why that's there. B is 151 East Lacy. That's a duplex, again. C is 9490- C is 9490 North Atlas Road. When it was, had a zoning map amendment to residential multifamily, it did so with a zoning development agreement. We included in your staff review. And their zoning development agreement most closely resembles what's allowed in the mixed residential. So that's why we were proposing mixed residential. I'm going to pause there really briefly. I, I, I found that our conversation with that particular owner was very interesting, very enlightening when she came to the town hall meeting. And we talked about zoning development agreement and we talked about development. So they have a house on the property and it's a larger piece of property and they want to develop it as homeowners who are developing it. And I said, you know, you kind of cross the barrier between a homeowner and a developer. We talk in here all the time about the developers, but for many of these folks, the homeowner is the developer. And so she just couldn't understand why, when she subdivided, she would have to do frontage improvements or why she'd have to build the roads, the road section or why she'd have to put in the curbs in the sidewalk because she's the homeowner. But I said, as soon as you become the subdivider, you're the developer. And probably driving him crazy because of back and forth. It was a good conversation. D is the Country Ridge Court Apartments. So those are directly north of city hall, directly north of the park. This is a quirky piece of property. And again, I said staff worked really hard and not trying to create spot zones. But sometimes it's kind of, you're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. The house that is on the driveway, so if you go in the driveway to the 45-unit apartments that are up here, there's a house. The house is a house. It's not part of the apartments. It's not part of city hall, but it's a single-family dwelling. Well, putting yellow in the middle of commercial and mixed use for the apartments didn't really make sense because there's lots of reasons that, that that's like conflict points all over the place. And so that's the only reason that we proposed mixed residential in this piece is because it's really not large enough to go past a single-family dwelling. And if it, if it ever migrated, it would migrate potentially to a, either mixed use or to the commercial use. E. E is 620 and 624 West Helen and 640 and 642 West Helen are duplexes on the south side of Helen Avenue. And so that's why they were proposing a mixed residential in that location. And then F is 9140 North Reed Road. And it's a church that has a special use permit. Special use permits became conditional use permits because people thought that if they came in and applied for a special use permit and it was granted that they were special and they were allowed to do it, they didn't realize that for the most part, when you do a conditional use permit, there are conditions associated to that allowed use that you have to, you have to love just doing it. That's why the name change happened, was to kind of help people through that process. So I'm not married to this particular zone that we're proposing on the church piece of property. It's, we proposed a mixed residential because the property directly to the east is mixed use. We're trying to kind of create a buffer and it's a pretty good-sized piece of property. So you'd have commercial, mixed use, mixed residential, and then residential, single-family. North and south of it, single-family. To the west of it, single-family. Ultimately, as long as it remains a church, the conditional use permit that allows them to have a church there is what would trump as far as how they would develop. And if they were to expand their use, their church uses, they'd have to come in and amend their conditional use permit. So that's how that got there. I'm doing much better, I'm not popping this thing. Like crazy during planning and zoning. So commercial. Commercial is a zone that provides for most types of businesses as well as for retail and wholesale sales and service. It doesn't have a maximum lot coverage and it doesn't have a minimum lot size and it doesn't allow any residential at all. So, those properties that are not, are within a, they're not within a plotted subdivision where the lot has a split zone between commercial and residential multifamily. They're kind of shown here in most instances. So you've got this piece that's like residential, single-family and residential multifamily. You've got this landlocked piece that's residential multifamily. And this piece, this piece and this long and skinny piece, those are all owned by the same owner. And they, this is where we took that 300-foot swath down, down Hayden Avenue and made the piece adjacent to Hayden Avenue commercial and the back became residential multifamily. And this piece over here, it actually is Dawn Taylor's, a property that already received a zoning map amendment to commercial. Just didn't make it onto this map. This is Gibbs Lumber. So Gibbs Lumber Yard in the back is actually in residential multifamily. And this piece of property down here is 9538 North Reed Road. And it's a house and it's got greenhouses in the back. It's a home occupation. And two-thirds, more than two-thirds of it are commercial. Kind of waffled back and forth between, could it be a single-family residential? And allow for the home occupation. Worked with the owner and the owner requested commercial. It's most all commercial now, so staff didn't disagree. They recognize, the homeowner does recognize that the house is non-conforming in a commercial zone and they understand the ramifications of that choice. 2766 West Hayden, we'll talk about in a moment, I think. Nope, maybe not. Let's just talk about, I think we do talk about it later. So I'm going to come back to that one. The staff suggested that these all go to commercial, but the owner of the property has requested a different direction and that is coming shortly. So mixed use. Mixed use is a zone that provides for both residential multifamily, of four units or more per structure, and commercial land use types creating a flexible environment for either one or the other of both. So residential multifamily that was allowed in residential multifamily and residential multifamily that was allowed in commercial has all been moved to mixed use. Only zone that we allow for residential multifamily to be in today is mixed use rather than the two other zones that they were allowed in previously. The commercial that is in mixed use is a subset of the general commercial that is allowed in the commercial zone. More, we wanted to, we tried to pick, planning and zoning and city council tried to pick uses in the mixed use that wouldn't be conflict points with residential multifamily, should there be development of that on the property. So where the existing use has one or more building structures with four dwelling units or more per residential building, structure or complex of structures, staff proposed the zone to be mixed use. Again, remember that's the only place that you're allowed to have it, is in this zone. So A is 120, 130 and 170 East Dakota Avenue has two fourplex dwelling unit structures and an accessory storage. To the east is single-family residential. The south and west is commercial. North is proposed to be single-family residential. B is the 61, 109, 159 and 162 East Country Ridge Court. They have three 15 dwelling unit, tried to fix that. Three 15 dwelling unit structures and a clubhouse. South and west is commercial. East is single-family residential. Northwest is proposed to be mixed use. North is proposed to be single-family residential. 615 West Hayden Avenue, 649 and 701 are driving west along Hayden Avenue. There are actually two garages. And behind those two garages to the north are two, six-plex, two six-plex buildings. And then immediately to the west of them, there are two eight dwelling units with garages that are in the middle. And we're proposing that based on those uses that they go to mixed use. So those properties that are within a planned unit development, the conditions of approval act as an overlay district to the underlying zone. Staff proposes the following. Avery Estates today, which is up on North Government Way, and you make a right into May Lane and they have a cute little playground in a center park. They have eight complexes, six complexes. Part of them have been townhome plotted on the southeast corner. But a chunk of them are commercial and a chunk of them are residential multifamily. It's currently split zone, commercial and residential multifamily. Commercial doesn't allow for residential multifamily or any residential use. And a residential is going away. So we were proposing that the entire Avery Estates go to one zone of mixed use. And then the planned unit development overlay would still direct how that would be developed if it were ever developed more, but it's pretty well-developed out. Honeysuckle Glade, which is down here to the south. It's west of Walmart, south, kind of circles around what used to be the Sylvan House. I'm not sure what it's called today. Anyway, it is, got several structures constructed up against Honeysuckle. Those are all built and they're all condo-platted. And then it has a one tri-unit that's built just south of the main roadway. And because the north portion of it, it's got a commercial, that assisted living, and it's got those built eight complexes, we're proposing that the north portion of that be zoned mixed use. And the south portion is actually working through several replats of that already built environment to single-family residential structures. And so because of that, although their footprints are smaller and those exceptions in the PUD allowed for that, we're proposing for those to go to mixed residential and then their PUD requirements would, would take over. So again, let's look at Avery Estates since I gave you the high version. So this is Avery Estates and this is the park. The residential multifamily is like this piece up here. And the rest of it is all commercial. We're proposing that the whole thing, as it's all built out, is mixed use. Makes sense for it to be mixed use. And then this again is Honeysuckle Glade. These are all built and they're condo-platted. This is built as a triplex as well. Again, that tri-unit fits in there. They've been, I believe they've been condo-platted as well. So again, those single-family units, they're condo construction, in this case not townhome construction, but really close to that mixed residential. So that's why we're proposing this to go to mixed residential and this to go to this whole northern piece, to go to mixed use. We did get two late comments that came in that I passed around to you. One of them was emailed to you direct and the other one came into the planning thing today. And it was a comment from a residence in Honeysuckle Glade. And his concern was not about the zoning map amendment. His concern was about a secondary way out. That was actually part of the planned unit development. And this exit through this additional parking and RV storage kind of area, should it be necessary that they can't make the connection through the Reed and Honeysuckle connection here, then this would be opened up as a second way out on the Honeysuckle. So that was part of the PUD plan approvals that occurred at that time. Just wanted to hit that while we were here. Okay, so for those properties where the project site has received approvals and is currently under development within the existing zone designation, staff proposes that a condition of approval shall be for the owner to enter into a zoning development agreement. Zoning development agreements, the template was included, shall be based on the existing conditions of approval, timelines for the development of the sites, future development of the sites, and how to amend the zone map or development agreement in the future. So these four sites that are shown here, trying to remember, also shown here. So the first one is a preliminary plat on Caldero Court, which approved a six-lot minor subdivision into lots of 15,000 square feet or larger to allow for the construction of multifamily dwelling structures. Applicant proposes to build fourplexes. And again, that is south of Orchard, butts up against that commercial piece of property. This commercial lot actually goes all the way through to Hess. It's all, one contiguous lot in there. So that's commercial. This would become mixed use because it'll have, it's proposed to be building fourplexes on those properties in accordance with the zone that exists today. Keyz is Northwest Solutions. That is a conditional use permit that came before the Planning and Zoning Commission in early August, late July, one or the other. And it allowed, the conditional use permit under the residential multifamily code that exists today, should you request buildings larger than fourplexes. Now, it doesn't say, no, ending at five. Anything larger, any building that has more units in it than four requires a conditional use permit with the Planning and Zoning Commission. They came forward with that and received approval with conditions to allow for that use to occur. The third one is the Gleason Conditional Use Permit. This is a funny weird lot. It is kind of an infill lot, north of the lot. It has a single-family dwelling on it today. North of the lot are two duplexes. South of the lot are the, that, two six-plexes and two eight-plexes that are directly south of it. Again, came forward for a conditional use permit to allow for two six-plexes to go on this piece of property. And so because of the six-plexes, that's for the mixed use again with the zoning development agreement. And then the last one is this one down here off of Reed Road. Reed is destined to go through to Prairie at some point in the future. And it's kind of sandwiched in between mixed residential to the east or proposed mixed residential to the east and single-family residential in a planned unit development to the west. Quirky little lot, it's got a sewer main easement on the west boundary of it. And it has a corner piece, that little pie-shaped corner piece to the north, isn't theirs. And then it has a funny curve in the road where Reed Road is, it makes it difficult. And planning, our city council saw a public records request for, I mean, public meeting request for a private road to go in to this piece during its preliminary plat approval. It was approved for four lots, for a minor subdivision into lots of 15,000 square feet or larger. The private street limits it to 15 dwelling units because that's all you can have on a private street. So these are owners during the town hall meeting. These are owners that came forward and requested that the zone designation be different than what we had kind of proposed originally as part of the town hall. And so should the council approve them, staff proposes that a condition of approval shall be required for each of the owners to enter into. So let's look at them. So the first one is 745 West Honeysuckle. The lot is approximately 0.769 acres in size. The applicant or the owner of the property is requesting to be able to construct seven townhomes. It, south of them is Honeysuckle Glade. And surrounding them are single-family residential, large lots to the north as well as to the west. The existing use is a single-family residence. And should the council, Planning and Zoning recommended approval with a zoning development agreement for this property, the zoning, the zoning development agreement should identify the maximum number of dwelling units as seven. It should identify a time in years. The applicant is proposing 10, that the residence be removed and that basically you've transitioned to those seven townhomes. And we should identify that if the residence is not removed by the date whatever the council directs in number two, then the property shall become a single-family residential in conformance with the remaining neighbors. 484, 488 and 518 West Dakota. This piece of property is a piece of property that came forward previously as a request for apartments and the neighbors came out and said they really, really, really were opposed to the amount of traffic that that might propose to be built. amount of traffic that that might propose to be built. Since that time, Kirkpatrick has gone through to Dakota and that road has been built. The property to the west has been platted for commercial lot development. And the property, this piece of property that currently has the wood chopping for seniors on it, for the donated wood that folks go in and chop. And it has three residential structures on West Dakota Avenue that have been there a really, really long time. It's split zoned. It's one of those properties that's currently split zoned, commercial and residential multifamily. So as we said in all the rest of the lots, we'd kind of migrated toward, split zone between commercial and residential multifamily. We'd migrated toward kind of a commercial use and not that residential use. But really felt uncomfortable about that as a thought because it's in a sea of residential and residential uses. The owner of this property also owns Wellspring Meadows. And Wellspring Meadows is an assisted living facility directly west of Buttercup. They own all four of these lots and they wanted to have this as like a third phase of a senior generational kind of progressive housing possibility. So when you think about progressive housing for seniors, there's like two of them that come to mind. Garden, I lose it every time, what's in Post Falls?
Garden Plaza.
Garden Plaza. Thank you. Is one. That piece of property is a lot larger than this one. Another one is Cortland Holmes has one as you're driving down Highway 95 and as you make the corner to go over the bridge, you go straight ahead. And that houses a few, a few senior apartments where they don't need hardly any assistance. It migrates to senior apartment living where you need a little assistance, but you still want to be independent. You migrate in to another facility where you are in an apartment, you have a kitchen, but your meals are really down at the cafeteria, migrating all the way to nursing home. And they actually have an Alzheimer's wing on that facility. So basically, when you move there, you just migrate kind of through the facility, but you don't have to move elsewhere. So that's really kind of the intent here. So that if they, if this were to be approved, it would have a zoning development agreement that would identify the time in years that that single-family, the single-family historical homes on Dakota Avenue would be removed. It would identify when the applicant shall enter into some kind of a phased master plant, master site plan agreement that would identify how long it would take them to kind of construct these phases of the project. It would identify the uses of the property as part of those senior progressive uses, like maybe it's a senior daycare or any of the uses that I've already kind of thrown out at you. 425 and 433 West Lacy Avenue, three lots. So this is the water tank. And this is Northwest Swiss. What is Northwest Swiss? It's a screw machining company. Been there for a really long time. And they have three properties that they kind of use together as their complex. They had requested at the town hall to have the ability to build a, to add a multifamily housing for their workers of the Northwest Swiss and have them on site, as well as potentially a caretaker residence to be both watching out for the business as well as for the apartments. So weird piece of property, this one here, this back one and then the northern piece in the fact that all of the landscaping is pretty well established already. The circulation from the building to the south to the building to the north actually enters this piece. Because there are three separate properties, the building to the west is, doesn't have any road frontage today. So one of the requirements would be that they would actually have to connect them all together so that they would get some road frontage to that lot to the west. Again, identifying a timeframe that we're going to allow this to potentially be allowed to be mixed use. And if they don't move forward with it, that they would revert back to a zone designation of commercial in this case because they've utilized that lot to the west as part of their circulation to the north path. And then, you know, they'd have frontage improvements as part of any future development on both Lacy Avenue and on this cul-de-sac piece up here because that is private, that is public right of way. I struggled with this piece as well because it butts up against residential, but it's already been pretty much a commercial use to date. It has that triplex in the front. It has commercial, again, manufactured home park, which is residential to the north. So again, I'm trying to figure out if it makes sense to have that buffer against the commercial with some residential multifamily. Staff really talked back and forth about this one because of the existing location of where it is. And because it's such a small area, you know, how much could you really build in there? It still meet all of the required setback requirements, lot coverage requirements, circulation, stormwater. It's got lots of kind of nuances. And it does really meet the kind of the criteria of mixed use with that commercial component and the multifamily component that we've kind of been looking for. Okay, so this one's the quirky one. Got lots of quirks to this one. 2766 and 2802 West Hayden Avenue is actually three lots. It's all owned by the same owners and they've owned it for a really long time. This piece up here in the front, right about there, this is commercial. And all of this is residential multifamily. They've lived in the home since forever and they've been in and out of here a lot. They were in and out of here with the last zone map amendment a year ago, and they've been in and out this time as well. And they're really frustrated. They really, really thought they owned a commercial and a residential multifamily piece. So they really, really thought they were going to get residential multifamily. But this nice line right here and everything this way is in the airport inner critical zone. So it really doesn't, it's not a really good location for multifamily to be located. And we've had that conversation. They're not happy about it, but we've had that conversation and I understand their reasoning why it's not good to have multifamily there. They're not happy about it. They really want to be able to develop the southeast portion as residential multifamily or have the ability to sell it with the possibility of developing as residential multifamily and the northwest portion as commercial. The other problem that staff has identified is they're at the hot point as topography goes. And so currently, this piece here, pretty much in here flows that way for sewer. And this flows that way for sewer. And that sewer is nowhere near up this far because there's no sewer in Hayden Avenue in that location. And if they were to get to this landlocked piece with sewer, it's just a really difficult place to try to figure out how to make that work. So without a full development plan of how that's going to develop and this piece needing some public or private road frontage, it's hard to figure out how to move that forward. So that's why staff had identified that the whole thing should be commercial. And then at some point, when a new developer comes in and should he want to develop that with that kind of mixture of uses, he could come forward with a plan and request his own map amendment. What they're requesting is that they enter into a zoning development agreement and identify a time in years that the residence would be removed or conditional use permit be applied for and approved for it to remain a caretaker residence, but it has to caretake something. And what's it caretaking? Don't know. Identify that no residential multifamily structures may be constructed within the inner critical zone in accordance with our plans and policies. Record with Cootney County on a form acceptable to City of Covenant to hold the property as a single lot, trying to get them that public road frontage on Hayden Avenue or a mechanism for them to reconfigure it to get it access to Hayden Avenue. And identify that any future development shall construct sewer to the correct sewer basin in accordance with the city's adopted sewer master plan. So the property has some challenges. Not saying that they're not, couldn't overcome them, but again, this is a homeowner trying to figure out how to develop, wearing both hats, and try to get the best of their retirement as well. So public agency and public comments, there were 33 agencies that were noticed as far as the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing process, which did not renotice as part of the. Harps had no comments. Idaho Department of Environmental Quality had no environmental impact comments. Post Falls Highway District was in support. Cootney County Sheriff's Office had a letter concerning general information related to growth and population and sheriff's needs. But again, this is recognizing existing conditions more so than future development. Prior to the public, public hearing with Planning and Zoning, there were public comments that were attached to the memo to the commission, which were part of your packet for tonight. And there were two neutral and three opposed. One of the public comments that was received at the tail end, the staff review had been pretty much completed, but it came in just before it got published, was that the owner north of 745 West Honeysuckle had also requested to go to mixed use. The property is a total of .7452 acres, but it's actually two lots. It's two lots that are held as a single parcel. So it shows up on the Cootney County site as one parcel, but it has that little dotted line down the middle, it's actually two parcels. For that matter, so is the property to the north of that. The concern that staff has about making this lot, property owner has some good comments. This is a property that actually has an easement on the east side of this, of this line through 745 West Honeysuckle, has an access easement, 20 feet wide, 20 feet wide, I think, of the east side into this lot and this lot. So you have access to get out onto Honeysuckle for those lots in the rear. They don't have access out onto Reed Road. And if this property at 745 West Honeysuckle doesn't occur with whichever timeframe the council proposes for it and it reverts back to single-family, then you have a spot zone of mixed use appear. And I don't know how they're going to develop the rear half because it's, you know, I just don't know how you would develop it to mixed use without more access to it. And this could be a spot zone. Again, that's entirely up to the council. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zone map amendment request and staff recommended conditions accept. With respect to 2766 and 2802 West Hayden and that vacant lot owned by the same property owner to the east, they propose that all lots shall remain as commercial. And with respect to the request from 8868 North Reed Road as a public comment, the property shall remain as residential, single-family. And all the members of the commission were in agreement. So you have two comments before you. One of them I would pretty call pretty much neutral, that 8744 North Avalanche that we talked about. And then 752 West Helen Avenue was concerned about the appropriateness of mixed use, prefers mixed residential in her neighborhood. So as a, she's here and that property was residential multifamily and her piece of property is proposed to be a single-family dwelling. The properties to the south of her exist today as mixed use with that one in the middle having the conditional use permit that allows for it to go to a, to six plexes, mixed use. And this piece of property up here, again, being very cognizant of the neighborhood constraint, was only proposed by staff to go to mixed use with that zoning development agreement limiting the uses. So just wanted to answer those two public comments that came forward. And then the members of the public, in order to provide public testimony, should address the standards of approval as identified within staff review and on the handout. The council will provide findings for the proposed zone map amendment as one motion at the conclusion of their deliberations. Those are the four standards. I can leave the four standards up or I can, I scan for questions as well. And then the council can choose.
Thank you, Donna. Appreciate that detailed explanation there. I have three questions for you on, if you could zip back to the 745 West Honeysuckle, the rectangular that's surrounded by single-family residential. There you go, that one, the purple one on top. How long has that individual been working or talking to you about?
They're actually here in the audience tonight, so they could provide better testimony than I could to that effect. But I would say it's the better part of three plus years.
Three plus years, good enough. And if you could go up to the, on Reed Road, the church property up there?
I think they're here in the audience as well.
F, I believe, right there. I think that's one. From what I'm seeing there, that's, that is completely surrounded by single-family residential. And I, I understand that on the east side that that would be mixed use. But my concern is with the rest of the neighborhood being single-family residential, that if the church ever goes away, that, that that would perhaps be more in character with the neighborhood as being single-family residential as opposed to the mixed residential that is being proposed right now. And, and if you could go up with me too, to the water tower property. I'm, there you go. I have, looking at the zoning there, I have some real concerns with the neighbors to the west and putting in, putting in, in mixed use, essentially they would be apartments. I understand that they're looking for apartments for their employees. I'm wondering if it would not be more appropriate to lower the density there in consideration of the neighbors to mixed residential. It would probably eliminate development down the far western edge of the property with, with that, but it would still provide opportunities for, for homes on the north side of that property. Those are, those are concerns that I have at this point. And for the folks that are in the audience on 745 West Honeysuckle, what are you?
Can I, can I interject really quickly on this piece?
Yes, go ahead.
So one of the things that staff really tried to do is not create split zoned properties. So today, the property is zoned residential multifamily for this piece. And this piece is zoned commercial. So if you were to propose what you're proposing, you would create two split zoned properties. If you were to propose that the northern piece go to mixed residential, then you would have two split zoned properties, which we were effectively trying not to do.
Trying to avoid.
Totally concur with your assessment of being close to single-family residential to the west and to the north. But remember, you have to have a, a pretty good size setback. Mixed use requires that you can have circulation aisles in your area, but you still have to have your two parking spaces per dwelling unit. You still have to have your stormwater. Mixed residential requires that you have 20 feet or 30 feet, depending on what you're building, of street frontage on a public or private street. So each lot that you would create for each building that you're proposing mixed residential would have to be fronting a public street or a private street. And so those were some lot considerations that staff looked at in conjunction with the uses of commercial and multifamily in this same lot. Tried to, good thoughts.
What is these, how high is the vegetative barrier between, between the residences in there? Is it, is it mature trees? Is it?
Pretty well established.
It is. Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to say you might want to continue the discussion of, you know, options and concerns after the- options and concerns after the public comment.
Sure, perhaps we should have a public comment first? Okay, that's what, that's what we were considering.
The vegetative requirement for mixed use butted up against residential is stricter than for a residential multifamily butted up against residential, or for commercial butted up against residential. So whatever, if they were to do mixed use in this location and development as such, they would have to add to the vegetation that's already there.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Mayor?
We will, uh, let, let's have public comment first, and then we'll...
Could we have a short recess before public comment?
Sure, we can take a...
We've been here an hour now.
Can we, everybody live with a 10-minute recess here? Great, we'll reconvene at 6:40. Okay, it is 6:43. We are reconvening our city council meeting. The next part of our hearing process is that the public will be called on to comment. If any member of the public has anything that they would like to say, I would appreciate it. If you haven't already done it, thank you, Tom, filling out a public comment form. I need on that form for you to put your address, and we'll have to follow that up on a couple of forms here. And also to indicate whether you are neutral for or against the proposal. We can do that when you're up here. The, uh, the first person we have to speak tonight...
That's neutral, and then if we can have Thomas clarify, so that we can do it in order.
Yes. Is, uh, is neutral on the proposal, and it is Darrell Anderson. When you come up to the front, if you would please state your name and whether or not you are a resident of the city of Hayden.
I'm Darrell Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, before you start, I'm sorry, I also need to tell folks that you have three minutes at the...
Five.
I'm sorry, we have five, thank you. At four minutes, I'll raise up a card just to let you know that you've got a minute left to go, okay?
Sure. I'm Darrell Anderson. Uh, I'm not a resident of Hayden, but I'm a landowner of Hayden. And I'm here, I needed to talk to you about two pieces of property within this proposal, and I mostly just have questions that maybe you could answer at another time for me, too. The first off is the church on Reed and Orchard, the one you've talked about a couple different times. Um, I am not a controlling body of the church, I don't, can't make any decisions that's done through a church council. Um, I'm here just to gather information. The question about that property is what would be the benefits of either of the two proposed zoning changes to the property? One is single-family and one is multi-use. I wonder if there's a benefit or a, um, uh, you know, a detriment to having one or the other zones? That doesn't have to be answered at this time, maybe somebody already does know. I'm thinking that multi, uh, uh, residential that would, that would allow more structures on the property may be beneficial to us in the future if we were ever to sell. But just to let you know, we don't plan on developing that land. We are, we are a community church, we're about the people who live right across the street from us, and, and we're about throwing picnics and out in that big piece of grass, and that's what really, what we want to do. We just want to stay there. We'll probably be there for another 20 years or 25 years, so probably all of us will mostly be in a box.
Thanks.
Sorry, you know, 25 years on me is gonna put me way out of the end. Okay, I'll be stumbling around anyway. Okay, so that, that was the first thing that I, I would, if you could, uh, give us feedback as far as what we can do with that, as far as which way would be the best for our church to go? Because really, it sounds to me with our special use permit, it doesn't matter. Okay, so on the second piece of property, does my second five minutes start now? I own a property at 1910 West Honeysuckle Avenue. It didn't come up in the information today. It is intended to be zoned a single-family residential, and there's a duplex on it right now. So that creates a little bit of conflict, something that maybe, I didn't talk to you, Donna, about this earlier today, but that's something we'll probably have to look at to see what the zoning is gonna be. My intention for that property is to do a subdivision. On the south side, it borders Tumbleweed Circle. The developer who was Copper Basin who put that land in, stubbed in sewer, water, and gas, electricity, it's all there in the back of the property. And all of those one-acre lots, or 1.1-acre lots, have curb already, and they have utilities already stepped into them. So I believed at the time, that was 20 years ago, that the city had every intention that everybody would subdivide those lots, and they'd be putting in houses right across from Tumbleweed Circle. So I don't know if the, uh, if the fact that I'm planning on making 2.5-acre parcels, one's north, one's south, with the fact that it already has a duplex on it, it almost sounds like there's gonna need to be at some point a special use permit or something of that sort to allow that duplex to continue to exist in what now is slated as a, uh, single-family residential area. And so that's another question that needs to be answered, is just, what do we do with the duplex, since it doesn't conform with the single-family residential which is proposed? And then what do we do when it comes time for subdivision? What's gonna happen there? You know, how do we? Because really, what I, my, my goal as a landowner would be to subdivide it, keep the, yeah, no problem, boss. Uh, keep, uh, um, keep the duplex as, as it is on a half-acre parcel, still meeting the, the requirements of residential, and have a house on the other end, uh, which I would probably move into. I'm gonna build a house there. That's my intention. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Anderson, before you leave, council, is it appropriate to respond to Mr. Anderson's questions now on the, on the church property? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. I appreciate it, thank you.
My hesitation was only because as much as I would like to, from a process perspective, we need to just keep the comments moving forward.
I believe Mr. Anderson could, could talk with Donna after the meeting, though, and get the answer to those questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Thomas Schaefer. And, Mr. Schaefer, are you neutral for or against the proposal?
Uh, my question is neutral.
Neutral, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead, Mr. Schaefer.
So, um, Ms. Phillips, when she was doing that presentation, which I found impressive, uh, she brought, she made a comment that if a, and you were talking about the Kyler Estates, she was talking about the Kyler Estates in particular, and she said something, the effect of this property would become out of conformance if rezoned. And my question is, what happens to a property if it goes out of conformance? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. And, Mr. Schaefer, if you'd care to talk to Donna after the meeting, she can fill you in on some of that information.
Okay, I actually did speak to her, and she said that I had to address this question to the body, then she would get up and would possibly answer most of the bodies.
Okay.
Just follow the process.
Oh, it's the rules. Thank you very much. Ms. Lynn Frazan?
Hello, um, I just wanted to comment, um, I... Hello, I just wanted to comment, I live, you know, in Hayden, and just on the wonderful, you know, information that we've got, I understand, but I do think that I was surprised about the seven townhomes on such a small lot. It would affect the area where I live, and I feel that more thought needs to go into the amount of growth that is in this particular draft. I would like to see more, maybe, time spent on it. I realize that you guys have spent a lot of time on this already, but as a person who believes in, you know, people allowed to do what they would like with their own land, at the same time, I would like to see the community, you know, preserved. Because if we want to have the community that we all like and love, we need to preserve it a little bit more to what the standards that we have presently. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Calvin Freitas. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for letting me speak. So I'm a citizen of Hayden, I would like to thank the council for their diligence on the important matters facing the city, and I did appreciate this presentation, it was very helpful for my understanding of the zoning considerations. So I moved to Hayden in 2020 because I wanted to live in a small town that had the kind of feel that Hayden has today, and I wanted to live in a community where the voices of the citizens mattered, and a place where the government represents the will of the people in response to their questions, concerns, and comments. I do not want to live in a place where unelected groups work with the government to make decisions on behalf of, for the people rather than on behalf of the people. I agree that we should strive to improve Hayden, and do that based on what's best for the people of this town. I ask you to not increase the density of residential housing in Hayden to an extent that it's going to impact that feel of this town that we have today and that a lot of us moved here to enjoy. Thank you.
Ms. Teresa Roth. If you could give it to the city clerk, please, first, and then she'll distribute.
Okay, my name is Teresa Roth.
Just a moment.
Oh. My name is Teresa Roth, and I'm a Hayden homeowner, and what this proposal is, is really five different proposals. There's parts of it that are very uncontroversial, that even I have no problem with, but there's parts of it that are very controversial. What I'm gonna address is the conversion to mixed residential. That's what most of my comments here refer to. Okay, I'm gonna start with a quote from the city attorney's brief that was written in response to my complaints about unenforced density limits. And even though we disagree about the density limits, I think she gets to right to the heart of the matter. The quote is, "The due process guaranteed by the U.S. constatation requires Hayden's laws to be definite and certain in their statement so that a person of ordinary intelligence can understand them." As someone who has spent a lot of time reading comprehensive plans and zoning regulations, I can assure you that several of Hayden's zoning regulations are unconstitutional, including the self-contradictory definition of mixed residential zoning. We've already written to the city council about these contradictions, and we're not convinced by the city's argument that explain away the fact that the minimum mixed residential lot size do not conform to the claimed density limits. Now, even the city attorney has weighed in on this, but when the city zoning code is so convoluted that the attorney needs to write a four-page memo to clarify the meaning of three sentences in the zoning codes, I think that the standard of a person of ordinary intelligence understanding what this zoning code really is about has been violated. We believe that Hayden needs clear, unambiguous, non-contradictory zoning laws, and that the zoning code for mixed residential should be revised. And in the meantime, it does not make any sense to convert hundreds of parcels from a zoning designation that is well-understood to a confused and self-contradictory zoning code. The inherent problem with vague zoning codes is that they rely on the subjective interpretation of individuals. Why would anybody have to resort to the word of a city official to figure out what a zoning code is? Why can't the, why can't the mixed residential zoning density be obvious from the inspection of the code itself? When zoning laws are not clear, and they are arbitrarily enforced, the laws favor powerful, wealthy corporations that can afford loweries to advance their wills. For individual property owners of limited means, clear and consistently enforced laws are their only safeguard. Before rezoning any parcels to mixed residential, the city should change the mixed residential zoning designation to make it conform to a predictable and forcible, understandable density. This should be easy and straightforward to do. In fact, I have done it for you, and it took about half an hour. The top chart demonstrates what I've already, a point I've already made, which is that the claimed eight-unit density is false, and that the real densities of mixed residential is much higher than that. The lower, the bottom part is some, is just making basic calculations of what the zoning, the minimum lot size would have to be in order to actually enforce a practical density of approximately eight. And I even went a little higher than that because the realistic densities aren't the same as the theoretical. So the proposed densities outlined above are not only compatible with existing residential multifamily zoning, they provide more options and additional flexibility for both developers and existing properties. This chart only took a few minutes to prepare. It is obvious and straightforward. It's so obvious that it begs the question, why didn't the city do this in the first place, and why doesn't it fix it now? There is an answer. The fact is, the planners who developed the 2040 comp plan never intended the mixed residential development to be limited to eight dwellings per acre. It's a ruse. The minimum lot sizes for mixed residential were selected for a very specific purpose, and everybody knows what they are. They are, they were selected to enable the densification of existing single-family neighborhoods. The lot-size miniflums for both duplexes and triplexes were intensely, intentionally specified in such a way that they could be built on a single-family lot of approximately 82,000 square feet. Once an older single-family lot is designated to mixed residential, developers will be able to buy up older lot homes and replace them with duplexes or triplexes in what was formerly a single-family neighborhood. This is exactly the type of development that advocates of smart growth promote, and it is already being done in cities throughout the country.
Ms. Roth, I'm sorry, your time's up. Five minutes are up. Thank you. Have a comment from Tamara? Did she have to leave? Okay. Would anyone else like to make any comments, fill out a form, bring it forward? Okay, does council have any questions to ask of the public? And we will close this hearing.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I do have a question. Donna, would you go ahead and address the question that Mr. Schaefer had about...
Oh, count them out.
In rebuttal, she can address that.
Yeah, she'll have rebuttal on that.
Thank you.
Okay, the hearing is closed. Now we'll have the opportunity for council to deliberate, and...
Does she have to do rebuttal before it closes?
She, yes, Donna will do rebuttal before the hearing closes.
We won't close the hearing yet till we hear from you.
Rebut, and then we'll close.
He's got meekitude.
I know.
So I believe the first person that we heard from tonight was Mr. Anderson in regards to Divine Church. He's correct in the fact that the conditional use permit is there, and he is also correct in the fact that the conditional use permit sets out kind of the requirements related to setbacks and landscaping and mitigation, should they, you know, make changes to the site, that's the conditional use permit that... Mayor Forcell made good points in the fact of, you know, what happens when the church is no longer there, and how do we want to see that develop? And staff really wavered back and forth with this one, should it be a single-family residential? Should it be mixed residential? They're both allowed uses in the, they're both allowed uses in both of those zones with a conditional use permit. And so because it's been noticed as mixed residential through all of the process, and it's only been here, you know, a part of this, meaning that the conversation about potentially leaving it as single-family residential has come up, one of the options of the city council is that you could approve it with conditions, and your condition could be something like, and I'm just throwing this out, it doesn't have to, you know, it's just a beginning place, you could suggest that you approve it as under mixed residential because that's the way it's been noticed, as long as it remains a church. So they enter into a zoning development agreement that limits the use to commercial, I mean, limits the use to church and its typical accessory structures, but should the use of a church cease to be a church, then the property would revert back to single-family residential unless somebody came in and requested an amendment to the zoning development agreement. It is an avenue to kind of continue both worlds moving forward. So it wouldn't be allowed to develop in any fashion with the zoning development agreement other than what's allowed as the conditional use permit allows for today. Just as a thought. Regarding his 1910, his, that property is actually zoned residential suburban, and it is an acre, he is correct, everything he said was correct about the property, but this zoning map amendment focused on residential multifamily, and not on that property, and I didn't know it was a duplex, so we'll address that at some future date, and with him specifically. So the second conversation was from Tom Schaefer, very good question, didn't realize that was your question, so. A non-conforming use is a use that was allowed to be constructed under all of the zone requirements that were there when it was built. But then came, something came along later and changed the zone, it could be a city-initiated zoning map amendment like what we're in today, it could be, which is usually the case, I might add, or it could be some other mechanism, but ultimately, they're now in a, now a use that's in a zone that doesn't, doesn't fit, doesn't fit the purpose of the zone, it doesn't, may not fit the setbacks of the zone, it just, it doesn't work. But if you believe that that particular use isn't going to, you really try not to create non-conforming uses, and we worked really, really, really hard at not doing that, I think there's only one, I think this is it, actually, of the spots that we created, non-conforming use, except for those two houses that were in commercial zones, that exist today in commercial zones that, that are non-conforming today and would remain non-conforming. All that means is, is that you can't increase the nonconformity. So if you're like a manufactured home park, that's a non-conforming use in many, many zones, we've got manufactured home parks in commercial zones, and residential suburban zones, and the single-family residential zones, and all kinds of zones, mostly because when they annexed in, that was the zone that they were at the time. But as we know today, commercial zones don't allow for residential uses, even though we have a residential multifamily zone, park in a commercial zone. So what that basically means is that the park can't increase. Can it have a trailer that, or a manufactured home, pardon me, excuse me, that's a faux pas, you have a manufactured home that moves out, can you replace it? Oh, yeah. If you have a manufactured home park that removes almost everybody, that still maintains a manufactured home park, manufactured homes within the park, two or three, and is working through redevelopment like we have in several places in town, can they replace them up to the maximum that were allowed originally? Yes, we can. So that's a non-conforming of a manufactured home. If you're looking at a non-conforming of a single-family dwelling, which is what we're trying to eliminate, and we will, should this zoning map amendment be approved, if you have a house, that's a relatively small house on a medium-sized lot, and you want to put in a five-foot addition under the rear of your house, because your lot size doesn't meet the minimum lot size of the zone that it's in, you can't do it. Even though you can meet all the setback requirements, and you can meet all the lot coverage requirements, you can't do it because you're increasing your nonconformity because your lot's not big enough. And so by going to other zones, that resolves that issue. So in this case, this building footprint of this fourplex is a pretty good footprint on the lot, so we're not anticipating that it is going to get larger. And that's why we were, and it fits with the whole rest of it. If we treated it like a fourplex, it would go to mixed use, and then I'd have single-family residential, a spot zone of mixed use, and the rest of it mixed, that's why.
Okay. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yes. I missed the Arts Commission lady's name.
Lynn Frazan.
And I can't speak, I won't speak to your personal, personal viewpoint of the context of the, of the neighborhood, I'm gonna leave that to the council during their findings. I appreciated your comments, and think that the council has done a really good job stepping back with the interim ordinance, listening to the citizens, and moving forward with a zoning map amendment, recognizing the existing conditions for many of the project sites, going from residential multifamily to single-family residential speaks for itself. And then I, I only have one comment to the last presenter, to Ms. Roth, and she makes really good points, I can't say she doesn't make really good points, she does make good points, she makes good thinker-question points, and she gets really nervous when she's up here, she shakes up crazy, and she gets kudos for having the ability to come up here and present, and I applaud her for doing that steadily. I might not always agree with everything that she says, it's important to note that, but I do applaud her for doing that because we need to listen to all citizens and all property owners. So with that, I want to say that of the 551 property owners that are part of this project, you've seen every public, every public testimony that's been part of this process, you've seen comments of, every public comment that we've received, you've gotten comments of, and we've received a lot of praise from those 551 property owners, and I would be remiss if I didn't say that out loud. So they need to be part of this as well. So as part of the eight dwelling units per acre, in Title 11, Chapter 2, Section 3, it states, "Mixed residential may not be greater than eight dwelling units per acre." So if you have a project that walks in the door, and they are proposing a development in mixed residential, staff evaluates whatever that project is, and they know that they can't have more than eight dwelling units per acre, and they're approved based on what they are bringing forward as part of that. So you can't get to more than eight, that's, that is the code, that is, that is what it is. So I'm, it, it, that's all I'm gonna say about that. And I stand for Chris, and I'm not sure who's beefing. And I'm not sure who's beefing.
Do we close the hearing at this point?
You can close the hearing for questions.
Close the hearing at this point. All right. Council, questions, comments of Donna?
I guess so. Donna, can we visit the recommendations of the planning commission regarding the three properties? We just visit them and read, you know, and emphasize them a little bit, I guess, so they're all understanding what they are, and what the recommendation exactly is or was.
Okay, so these are three properties that exist today with a home on the south portion of the middle piece of property. The exists today with the north 300 feet as being commercial, and the remainder of it as being residential multifamily.
Okay.
The line that kind of goes down in a diagonal from northeast to southwest is the exterior boundary of the inner critical zone of the airport. And one of the things we worked really hard with, with the airport, is to try not to create more conflict points. So, they've requested, the airports requested to not densify those areas within those inner critical areas, those critical zones of the airport. So, that area would never, would, is not proposed to go to a multifamily use. And they recognize that, the owners recognize that.
And the recommendation from planning is to?
Is to leave it all commercial.
Right, okay. And the other was yet, was the other one the church, basically? There were three, there were three?
There were three of them. So, there's that one. There's this one, that 425 and 433 West Lacy Avenue, up there where the northwest, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that that move forward with a zoning development agreement to mixed use, but to, just to identify a time constraint to that, and that should it not develop as mixed use, that because it's a part of this lot that's residential multifamily, because it's a part of that other lot, to have it revert back to commercial.
Okay. So, if we were to take that recommendation, would we make that time recommendation now as part of it, say, in regards to this property, we would, you know, two years, five years, whatever?
Whatever.
We would make that as part of the motion?
Yes. The zoning development agreements themselves, however, will come back to you at a later date, but the time.
In two weeks.
With that recommendation of, okay?
Your recommendation or approval of a motion to that extent, that information would be in the zoning development agreement when it comes back to you for approval.
And the zoning development agreements are based on the templates that are in your staff review, and they allow them an amendment process, so if they wanted to come back and extend that length of time in the future, they could request that, getting closer to when that timeframe is up.
And the third property was?
This is the one that is west-east of Wellspring Meadows, that they wanted to have it as the next phase of their generational.
And your recommendation was?
To do it with a zoning development agreement. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
The thing with this one is, if, if we were to establish a time in years, it was, they were more concerned with the removal of the residences, the single-family residences on the property, which are essentially non-conforming uses as mixed use, and they were concerned with the cleanup phase, and then they were suggesting to enter, the zoning development agreement would require them to enter into a phased master site plan agreement that would identify how they were going to build that out over time.
The time period.
Right. And then the fourth one was the honeysuckle property.
Okay, thank you.
The owners are here.
That's it for me. Council President Roder, questions?
Yeah, I just appreciate the detail that Donna goes through with all this information. I mean, a lot of it is just, you know, for me, because there's so much of it, and, and we have to rely heavily on what the attorney is, what you bring to us. And so, it's been, it's been difficult. I would say this is probably one of the more difficult decisions since I've been on city council, to wrap my head around and, and understand the ramifications now and for the future, because I think that's, that's something that we have to consider. So, with, with that, I want to make sure that we're looking at 551 proposed zone changes.
Looking at 551 residential multifamily zone map amendments. We also included the rest of Avery Estates that was commercial, because it's within that PUD, and that added about another 20.
Okay. So, then out of that, 571 zone map amendments, how many of those would be going, going from multifamily residential to R1?
Can't answer that question.
At one point?
I just can't, I just can't answer.
Well, at one point I asked that question before, and it was like a hundred and some.
Yeah, I just don't know what it is. It's not, it's, it's, it's the largest, it's the largest number, but I can't tell you what it is.
Out of the different categories that there, so, so, so we're moving them into an R1 strictly residential, based on X amount of homes per acre on R1. Now, my understanding is that if you look at the future land use map, that those properties that are multifamily residential, that we're proposing going to R1, will not be in R1 in the future land use map.
Right. So, as I said before, the comprehensive plan, one part of the comprehensive plan is any more weighted than any other part. So, I focused more heavily on the goals and policies of the city, because we are, again, evaluating our existing conditions, and so, as these develop in the future, they'll be developing in accordance with the future land use map unless they ask for a comprehensive plan map amendment. So, I focused on the goals and policies of comprehensive plan, and how these zone map amendments as proposed fit those portions of it, mostly because the future land use map is born out of the goals and policies as well. But anyway, that's why.
So, where I have some difficulty with is going and transferring, having rezoning this to R1, which seems, seems to be an appropriate zone for those single-family homes. And to me, the long-term protection of the property rights and that, you know, would be for that to remain single-family resident. Now, someone in the audience mentioned tonight that a developer could come and buy those that we now transfer into R1, and they could then apply for a new, a different zoning based on the, the future land use map, and tear down three houses and put up?
Only if it's approved by city council. Again, city council for zone map amendments, you look at goals and policies and future land use map, it's a combined effort, it's not a one or the other. No portion of the comprehensive plan is more important than the other.
So, so.
Not disagreement with you.
You may have answered this, but why don't we just keep them in R1? See, that's where I have difficulties.
And in some cases, maybe it makes sense to leave a zone map amendment request as R1. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't.
But that means?
But it is our residential multifamily that we're transitioning to our existing zones, based on existing uses.
And then we'd have to change our future land use map?
No, because we, at a time of development, should they want to develop in accordance with the future land use map, meeting goals and policies, they'd come back before this hearing body, planning and zoning and this hearing body, and make that request, and have to show how they're meeting the intent of the comprehensive plan. We're not proposing, in this, we're not proposing, except in these few cases that have zoning development agreements. And truly, it's important to note that these ones that we're proposing with zoning development agreements are ones that we staff have been working with for a while. So, if somebody just came in and said, hey, we want to change that, we don't really have a plan, or haven't been in and out of staff, we did not propose those. So, everything else of the 551 are based on existing uses, no changes.
Also, I brought up an issue, and I, and I'm going to change the wording a little bit, but, and it pertains to our evaluation here, is, and this is a question for our attorney, if she could maybe help out on it, is something that, that I struggle with, is that we have two, two different property rights, the way I look at it, that are being affected here. You have people that are being, that, we'll just say, we have a single-family residence that is staying single-family residence, and we have a multifamily that can be built right next to it. So, the question is this, is that the multifamily residents, because the zoning allows it, they have property rights to do that, and we have to respect that, and our attorney's going to tell us that. However, what about the property rights of the person that has an R1, that said, you're changing the character of my neighborhood? There's a gentleman here tonight that says, I want to keep it a smaller community, and they'd like to see it, a smaller, single-family residence. So, the legal question is, do they have any property rights to protect their, their right of, of keeping their neighborhood in what they believe should be a small community, single-residential neighborhood? Because that, that leads to another question, is, and if they don't, why do we take comment from anybody that says, I don't like it?
So, I think your question is more directed to those applications where we have applicant-directed process. So, this is different, as Donna indicated in her presentation, because this is a city-initiated zone change that's based on what happened with eliminating the residential multifamily and creating these two new zones, and then needing to migrate those residential multifamily parcels into a zone, because we can't have zones within the city that, we can't have parcels within the city that don't have a zone. So, the migration is happening at the recommendation of the city, because they're honoring the existing use on the ground right now. So, you, I think what you're alluding to is the public process, when we have a parcel, an applicant initiated, like for instance, your example you just gave, where if somebody that we now migrate to an R1, comes back in later, and they want to have a zone map amendment and change their parcel to a mixed residential at that point. So, then they have a property right, and their neighbor, who's called an affected person by statute, also has a property right, and how do we weigh those two different property rights? And you're right, it's a tough job, because you have an obligation to look at the property rights of everyone involved, but that's not what's happening here tonight.
I understand, but it's, it's an application process in my brain, because then I go, why do we listen to people if it doesn't matter? Because sometimes it seems like that's the way it is.
I think that you, only you guys can evaluate whether the comments are having bearing on your decision-making, and the public absolutely has a right to come in and make their public comments. You're just, you're, you are stuck with those standards of approval, though. So, you have to take the comment, you have to take all the facts that you're, are presented to you, and you have to apply those, just like a judge does, to the elements of a crime, for instance. You're applying those facts to the standards of approval.
I know it's a little off my question, but it's an application of what we're talking about here, because this is what's going to happen when this, if this gets approved, is there's going to be those situations. I'd just like to know, whose property rights have a higher right, or are they equal? And if they're, if one can trump the other, then why are we even listening to the other side?
Well, the affected parties, when they come in to object, need to speak to the standards of approval as well, and how they are affected, or their rights are affected based on the standards of approval. And that's what you guys are waiting through.
Okay, thank you. I got, that's all I have.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes, okay, I have a couple of different questions. One thing I was asking about, or going to ask about, was the idea of spot zoning. Could you give a, a brief definition of spot zoning again for me?
So, I don't know if you can see it back there. I was just going to say, if you look at your zoning maps, that each of you have the current zoning map, that each of you have laminated on your, yeah. Um, back there. This is the top one.
Uh, okay.
This back here, a piece of commercial, or any of, this one right here is a spot zone. Right there, that's a spot zone. It's a piece of commercial in a sea of residential, single-family, and if you guys will all turn around in the back there, I apologize. This piece of red right here, in the middle of the sea of residential, is a spot zone. That's what we don't want to have. I can't, I wouldn't be able to do. We're really hard at not having, well, we're really hard at mitigating it, so that it doesn't. My mic's clicked terribly with the neighbors. Sorry, that was a good walk.
Thank you.
Standing here.
So, so that, my question comes to, like Macy Loop. Macy Loop, I feel like Macy Loop is both single-family residential in size, and also, you're saying some of it's too small, so you want Macy Loop to be?
Mixed residential.
Mixed residential. But to the east of it is a single-family residential parcel, and then over to the other side is also a single-family residential. So, why can't we just grandfather those homes in and say that's all single-family residential? Because they're, they're really only too small, less than 20 feet.
Doesn't matter, it's just that they're too small. And by being too small, they're, they're all, you would create all non-conforming lots. And the direction was to reduce non-conforming lots, not create non-conforming lots.
Okay.
And so, that's what the staff followed, was that direction.
Okay. And then, could you also go to the map towards the end that shows the mixed residential proposals? I mean, mixed use, mixed use proposals.
Ones with zoning development agreements, or the ones prior to?
Prior, I think. Just all, all of the mixed use, mixed use. I'm sorry, mixed use is what I mean. Okay. So, to me, that looks like spot zoning. Mixed use is here, 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 and here, and here. And then also, when people, correct me if I'm wrong, if a neighboring property came to us and said they wanted mixed use, would that give us difficulty in saying to them, you can't be mixed use? What they'll say next to me is?
Just one factor in your, in your discussion, as far as whether or not it makes sense to have a mixed use property there or not.
Right.
But as we identified at the beginning, the only zone that you have that allows for residential multifamily is mixed use, and those are existing multifamily properties.
Okay. All right. And, let's see.
Really good question.
I don't know if this is for you or for legal counsel, but I was just wondering, why can't the residential multifamily be brought back as a regular ordinance?
Because you adopted it as an interim ordinance, and that expires by statute after 12 months.
Okay. But it could be brought back as a regular ordinance, we could restate.
You can't, you can't have a residential multifamily zone, and therefore ordinance, as long as your comprehensive plan doesn't have a residential multifamily zone identified in it for your future land use. So, it was a domino effect, the comprehensive?
So, how was it allowed as a one-year, if it can't be?
It was an emergency because of the uprising from the community when the, this city-initiated zone change was first attempted. It was a Band-Aid fix to do a methodical, long-term city-initiated zone change, and not have your residents feel like it was too short notice, and that they didn't have time to understand what was going on.
So, in order to bring back residential multifamily, what would be the process?
You would reopen, you would have to vote to reopen your comprehensive plan, redevelop it as a zone, redo all of your master planning, your transportation master plan, your sewer master plan, your parks master plan, and then, once you've identified it as a zone in your comprehensive plan for your future land use map, just like the process happened before, then you would come back and do a zone text amendment at that point to create a? come back and do a zone text amendment at that point to create a residential multifamily zone again.
Okay.
More questions?
That's it for right now.
Councilmember Satterfield?
The only comments I have, I just want to thank Donna and her team for the work that they've put into this. But I also want to thank the public for participating in this. Most of the emails I've gotten are in support of this amendment. Most people recognize it's not perfect, but I don't know anything that is perfect, but most of the people that emailed me were supportive, so, thank you, Donna, and thank you, public, for participating.
Your comments, questions? With regards to staff? Okay, we'll begin deliberations here.
He closed, oh yes, well, he closed it and then asked staff questions.
Oh, okay.
Your rebuttal rolled right into staff questions.
Hearing's closed. All right, deliberations, comments, questions from council. I will start it off then, if no one's jumping up to clamor for it. I have, I have, when looking at 745 Honeysuckle, I have concerns about how that development would fit, but I think we need to also respect that they have been working with the city for some time to try to make something work on that. And I hope that council will consider putting in a relatively short timeframe for development in a zoning agreement for that, in their whatever decision is made here tonight, should you decide to proceed with this. For the Vine Church, the Vine Church is golden where they sit right now. Nothing will ever happen there, anything in the world can go. And in the interest of having to re-advertise and have another public hearing if we decide to do something different than what has already been noticed by Planning Commission, I hope that council would consider a zoned development agreement that would allow that to be mixed residential as long as the church is there. And if it is no longer used for a church use, that it would revert to single-family residential, because to my way of thinking, that comes the closest to what's actually in the neighborhoods surrounding it. Those are my comments. Other folks?
I do, I do, nobody else does, but may as well. Everybody seems to be wanting to, you know, bite it. But this can be a little bit lengthy, it's going to address a lot of my concerns and issues. This has been going on for at least a year, almost, since the interim ordinance was enacted, and it's going to expire on the 28th. And if we don't do anything, it's my understanding that these properties had no zoning at that There have been multiple noticing of the individual property owners, multiple postings, those who, of those 521-plus, okay, who are actually the ones who are involved in this directly, apparently not many really have an opinion on it, because as with Councilmember Satterfield, the majority of the comments that I have received have been agreeable. I have received two or three, maybe, maybe five at the most, of people who oppose it, but the majority of people either appear to not be concerned, not be affected, be okay with it, or whatever. A couple of the people opposing this have been very active on social media, imploring people to pack the meeting tonight. I looked at several social media pages, even had people who I've been blocked from send me screenshots of other pages, okay? And this doesn't look like we're packed. And sitting here making my decision, if this room were packed down the hallway with people, this is baloney, then it would have a real effect. If I'd been hearing people saying, "This is baloney," then it would have a much stronger effect. But I don't see anywhere near the concern, especially by those people who are directly affected. Now, with regards to the eight-dwelling units per acre issue, and that seems to be the main, probably the primary bone of contention here, why I believe that it is defensible. And this is going to be long, because the public, I don't think, had an opportunity. It is online, it's part of the packet. If you go onto the website and look at the agenda for this, it is in the packet, and you can find it. But, we're going to be here until 10 o'clock tonight. Okay, so I'm going to read bits and pieces of this. "As you know, member, the community has raised questions regarding representations that have been made about the density limits of the mixed residential and residential multifamily zoning districts, has also asserted that certain provisions of the Hayden Municipal Code are unenforceable. Idaho Code 50302 provides cities in Idaho with the power to enact such ordinances which are not inconsistent with the laws of the state of Idaho, and cities are granted the authority to enforce those ordinances. With respect to zoning ordinances, Idaho Code 676511 grants local governments the authority to enact such ordinances to carry out policies of cities of the entities comprehensive plan. The due process guaranteed by the U.S. Constitution requires a city's ordinance to be definite and certain in its statement so that a person of ordinary intelligence who reads the ordinance understands what the activity is prescribed may govern his or her actions accordingly." Voiles versus Napa 97 Idaho, five ninety, a bunch of numbers afterwards, 1976. "To validly enact a zoning ordinance, the proposed ordinance must conform with the general requirements of Code 50901 and be adopted in accordance with specific requirements of 676509 and 676511. Without addressing the particulars of each of these statutes, the public records establish that ordinance 619 was properly adopted. Hayden Municipal Code Section 1123 provides that each zone district has a minimum site standards related to the area of the site. Appearing below the table under General Notes, it states, 'During the planning process of the updates to the comprehensive plan, sewer master plan, transportation master plan, and parks master plan, maximum residential density,' I believe, was also shown for both, was assumed as follows. One, mixed residential may not be greater than eight dwellings, dwelling units per acre. It is contented that mixed residential zone does not contain a density limit of eight dwelling units per acre, and that the provision of the General Notes of Section 1123 cannot be enforced. Ordinance 619 was passed by the City Council on April 13, 2021. Ordinance 619 repealed zoning regulations in Title 11, Chapters 1 to 22, replacing it with Title 11, Chapters 1 through 8. Since ordinance 619 was properly adopted, it follows that Section 1123, which was contained within ordinance 619, is a properly enacted provision of the Hayden Municipal Code and enforceable. Section 1123 affirmatively states that mixed residential may not be greater than eight dwelling units per acre, and that was assumed during the planning process of the updates to the comprehensive plan. A person of ordinary intelligence, when reading the entirety of Section 1123, would understand the statement, 'Mixed residential may not be greater than eight dwelling units per acre,' is a site standard for the zone district. Should there be any doubt as to the enforceability of the mixed residential density limitation in Section 1123, the relationship of the comprehensive plan to the zoning ordinance provides further understanding. Hayden's comprehensive plan, sewer plan, master plan, transportation plan, and parks master plan all assume that mixed residential density limitation is eight dwelling units per acre. Idaho Code requires zoning district to be in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan. Idaho Code 676511. Accordingly, the city adopting the zoning ordinance has considerable leeway in determining whether the requirement is met. The determination of whether a zoning ordinance is in accordance with the comprehensive plan is one act of fact. As a question of fact, the determination is for the governing body charged with zoning. Balzer versus Cootney County Board of Commissioners, 110 Idaho, 3739, blah, 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 1986. The Supreme Court has repeatedly emphasized that while the comprehensive plan is not a legal controlling zoning law and serves as a guide to local government agencies charged with making zoning decisions, the body charged with making such decisions cannot ignore their comprehensive plan when adopting or amending zoning ordinances. Evans versus Teton City, 2003. Furthermore, court applies strong presumption that favors the validity of the actions of zoning boards, which includes the application and interpretation of their own zoning ordinances. Sanders, Orchard versus Gem City, 2002. Please be patient, I'm three-quarters of the way done.
If you could perhaps summarize from that one, I'd appreciate that.
Well, I understand, okay? This means that the comprehensive plan assumes that mixed residential density limitation is eight dwelling units per acre. So, I will forego the rest of it, except for this end part here, because I'm getting a crank. In addition to the assertions regarding the density limits of the zoning districts and the enforceability of the Hayden Municipal Code, the community member also made a number of assertions. These are summarized here. "Accessory dwelling units are permitted on every single-family lot regardless of lot size, and so mixed residential would allow 14 dwelling units per acre." Fact, this conclusion is incorrect. While ADUs are allowed in mixed residential and in residential multifamily on a lot with a single-family dwelling unit, the ADU counts as a dwelling unit and is still subject to the density limits per acre of mixed residential. "Assertion, every single-family dwelling in mixed residential is a potential duplex." Fact, this is incorrect. "Duplexes require a change of occupancy permit and additional construction. The change of occupancy permit would require the city to review site constraints, including minimum lot size, parking requirements, building requirements, additional sewer capitalization paid for additional dwelling." Last one, assertion, condominium density versus individually-planted triplexes cannot be compared. Fact, this is incorrect. By code, density is the number of dwelling units per acre. These types of dwelling units can be compared. So, this is primarily why I am going to stand on my decision about this, that mixed residential is a maximum eight. Residential multifamily with a conditional use permit allows as many as you can get on there, basically, and there's been a couple of recent issues that has demonstrated such that you have 14 dwelling units per acre. So, I am, I have to word stuff carefully here. Those of you that know me, and I've had all kinds of feedback and stuff, I ran for this position and have continually done what I believe I said I was going to do, and that's better managing the growth in density in the city. And I believe that mixed residential, okay, will better manage the density within the city of Hayden as compared to residential multifamily. Thank you for bearing with me. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Councilmembers? Councilmember White?
Yes. So, first of all, I'd like to thank the citizens that came forward today and gave public comment. I really admire you for stepping forward in doing that. I really admire and commend those who spent hours doing research, and I'm very grateful to them. It takes a lot of work and a lot of fortitude to do that. Many citizens are concerned more than are here today. I think many just don't understand what the implications are going forward. In April of 2021, the people of Hayden had over 1,700 letters of zone change sent out, which changed zones to match the future land use map, and which, most of them facilitated greater density. That changed, changing the zones on 1,700 properties was a very difficult thing to face. About 520 of those changes were removing residential multifamily zoning. Much of that was to make way for mixed residential and mixed use. The public expressed their displeasure, and then the residential multifamily zone was reinstated for one year to allow the Hayden City Council to take a better look at it. A lot of things have happened in this last year. We've had an election, we've gotten a new mayor, we voted on a levy, there are a lot of things have taken up a lot of time. So, now we have this rezone of about 550 properties, all confined to the residential multifamily zone. So, this zone change, even though it looks different, it's pretty much the same, just in a smaller number. Some of these changes look reasonable and good. For example, some existing zones such as commercial, suburban, and single-family may look fine, but almost 300 of these changes are giving us mixed residential, and about eight of them mixed use. So, I believe that our main job as city council is to protect private property rights. And I think that changing the zoning in already-developed properties en masse brings about many changes that people probably don't understand and will only discover later when it's too late. Sudden changes in your neighborhood, of what your neighbors are allowed to do on the other side of your fence. This applies to the future land use map as well. It opens up the gates to change that we're powerless to stop. There's unknown repercussions, and I think this shows too much government overreach. I think doing all this change at once is just too much control. For example, last year, some existing homes in residential multifamily were given letters of rezone to mixed use based on the future land use map. Then, two weeks later, changed to mixed residential. So, mixed use is, could be apartments and commercial, and then mixed residential is eight or more, or eight dwellings. But now, they're being given single-family residential. So, the things that property owners are allowed to do in each zone are dramatically different, but private property rights are being violated by zone changes on developed properties and the properties adjacent to them. One of our main responsibilities, too, is to make sure that we have the priority of law enforcement. And the sheriff's office sent us a letter that said, "Be proactive in planning and properly assessing our current and future growth needs." I don't believe that this has been done. I believe we need to have a plan for meeting the future needs of law enforcement in place before we open up the city to so much rezoning. So, mixed residential, it allows for three-story townhouses, and I think this is a radical new change for the landscape of Hayden. The fire department isn't equipped for it. We don't have a ladder truck. And the fire chief has said he's having a hard time finding funding to even hire people to man them. We need to make code changes, like stopping accessory dwelling units and being more clear on the wording, before we put 300 or so mixed residentials into code. We need to be more clear. Mixed use increases density, that's also three stories, and it's also spot zoning. I'm seeing mixed use here, here, and here. And this will open up the floodgates of people requesting it. Once we have so much in place, then it'll be harder for us to refuse and harder for us to slow the density. Before we open up the gates to solidifying the comprehensive plan, we need to look more at the future. So, how do we slow the growth? How do we make changes in the codes that slow the growth? How do we plan for a law enforcement? What about traffic mitigation? What about schools? What about all the different things that growth will bring? I believe we are putting the cart before the horse. So, in conclusion, I feel like the year that was intended to take a good look at residential multifamily was filled with distracting events that hindered the new council from taking a good look at the zoning. So... So I believe that this would open up the floodgates to more builders demanding mixed use. And I believe that, like what Councilman Roder was saying, the future land use map, that is what overrides everything. I believe we need to keep it the way it is and let people ask for zone changes as it comes available. Keeping residential multifamily, maybe changing the wording of it just a little to lower its density, what I'm proposing. I think that, so I ask that we leave it as it is and let people ask for zone changes as appropriate, and that we take this time to go back and look at the comprehensive plan again, look at the future land use map again, before we do this major upheaval of over 550 zone changes. Thank you.
Councilmember White, respectfully, I disagree with you that the future land use map overarches everything. Actually, I believe that the zone map is the final deciding word on what can and cannot go on the, can be built on the ground. But I certainly respect your, I certainly respect your opinion.
If you look at the future land use map, there is a lot of mixed use that is covering the properties of zones that we are changing right now. And so even though we are changing things from residential multifamily to single-family or commercial or whatever, it still is under the umbrella of mixed use on the future land use map. Thank you, though.
So Mr. Mayor, from a legal perspective and for the public and the record, I would just like to clarify that if the residential multifamily interim ordinance is allowed to expire without a process for moving those 541 parcels somewhere and doing something with them, your staff will have no direction on any application that would come in on one of those parcels. So there would be no design standards, there would be no density limitations, there would be absolutely no rules that apply to any of those residential multifamily, previously residential multifamily parcels. And in the Local Land Use Planning Act, you are required to have zoning options available for all of the parcels within your city. So I just want to be really clear to the council and to the public with regards to the law and the implications of the expiration of this residential multifamily interim ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Mayor? Other comments or questions?
Just Council President.
Yeah, that was my question that I was going to ask, is what if we do not approve this? And you're saying we have no choice.
You have no choice. Your interim, it doesn't mean, as Councilwoman White asked earlier, you can't go back and revisit how to utilize this zone in the future, but you will be out of compliance with the Local Land Use Planning Act by having 541 parcels that don't have a zone and a staff that has no direction on what to do with any applicant that comes in. They would not be able to say, here's your density limit. They would not be able to say, here are your design standards, here are your setbacks. They would have absolutely no rules that apply to those 541 parcels.
So Idaho law says we have to be approve this, basically?
Well, Idaho law says you're required to have a zone available for every parcel within your city.
So we have no choice. But also going along with what Councilmember White has said is that that doesn't exclude us from going forward and tweaking things and changing things based on the council's desire to take a closer look and modify things. But we're up against a timeframe. I mean, that's, that's how I read it.
Councilmember DePreez?
Well, right along with what Council President Roder just said, we've already done some tweaking and adjustment and code tax amendments and things like that. And nobody is saying, stop, okay? As issues come up, and I, like I've said, okay, individually, on individual basis, as things come up, look at the situation, look at the standards, look at what we are legally allowed and what have you to do. But I think we've already, there's been, in this last year or so, there's been a significant amount of adjustment, shall we say, and management of certain aspects of the future land use map in particular, so.
Further comments from council? I would be happy to entertain a motion from anyone on council at this point. Councilmember White, I'm sorry, did you have?
Well, I was just going to say that when this was first, the zone changes were first made, the residential multifamily zone was left unzoned for about five months. I think we could move forward and...
Is that fact?
Donna knows the timeline better than I do.
It was. We anticipated that the zone map amendment would follow right on the heels of the zone text, which is why we have projects that have been in the works for a long period of time, is because they've been trying to keep up.
Did you have projects that were affected by that?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I am saying.
Thank you. I'd be happy to entertain a motion at this point.
I'd like to make a motion, but first, you know, I'm going to generalize and make sure that the motion is inclusive of everything we need to, because it sounds like it's going to be somewhat of a complicated motion. With regards to, my basic motion is going to be to approve the recommendations of the planning and zoning. And again, this is just general right now, I'll formulate it. As recommended regarding the recommendations of those properties that we talked about, and my question is, is the church included in that? And do we need to, as we've talked about, the time, where do we put the timeframes in now or later when it comes to those properties and their agreement?
You can include timeframes in your motion now. The risk is that we may have property owners that haven't had any conversations with them yet about those timeframes.
So it's okay to leave it out?
Could leave those out, and we can bring those back in the zoning development agreements at a later date.
Okay.
If you have a thought, though, as you know, if you're looking at like three to five years versus five to 15 years, then we would have a beginning place to have conversations with those owners within the zoning development.
Do we need to put that in the motion, or is that just a personal comment you're looking for right now?
Put it in part of your findings, I guess, it would be helpful. But we're just trying to figure out what your kind of druthers are. We've kind of heard a little bit of it.
Okay, I'll take a shot at this, okay?
Do I need to listen carefully?
Most definitely. Which one do I want to do here? I'm gonna try this one, maybe? Okay, let's try this one. In the matter, I'll talk slowly. It's number two on that list. In the matter of PZE 22-0092, Citywide Residential Zone Map Amendment, I'm motion to recommend the city council to approve with conditions the citywide residential zone map amendment with the staff's proposed conditions and the following additional conditions. And is that where I would add in my time recommendation?
Add in your additional conditions, because I think you're going to say that the church property would have a zoning development agreement?
I would say that all properties that have a zoning development agreement would have a two-year development timeframe. Okay? So to continue, as it meets the standards of approval as discussed in deliberations, or more specifically, as follows, that they have a two-year timeframe.
To have an approved plan within two years?
To have an approved plan within two years, yeah. Thank you.
We don't have to mention the, those parcels that were brought up specifically. We just have to say that we take the recommendations of the planning and zoning on those parcels.
So yeah, you can take the recommendation of planning and zoning in its entirety and then add to it, you recommend all timeframes be two years, a timeframe of two years for approval of a plan, and then any other additional conditions you wanted, or...
Okay, that basically, I think I just tried to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
However, I don't believe the planning and zoning, their recommendation involves a zone development agreement with the church.
That's correct. That's why I asked if he was including the church.
Did I add that?
No.
Okay. So let's add to that, that a zoning development agreement with the church be included to remain, what is it now?
Residential multifamily.
Residential multifamily.
No, mixed residential.
As long as it remains a church, and that should it no longer be a church, that it revert to single-family.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
I believe I got it all.
Before you have a second, I think it would be appropriate, given the way that came out, to make sure all council understands the motion as articulated.
Abby, take a shot at it, is there now?
I'm not done typing it yet. Now the pressure's on me.
Grace, look.
Oh, so I have a motion to approve the recommendation for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission with their conditions and staff recommended conditions, and that all properties with a zoning development agreement include a timeframe of two years to receive an approved development plan. And adding the condition that a zoning development agreement be entered into with the Vine Church that should their use of a church cease to exist, their zoning would revert to residential single-family.
Sounds good to me.
Hold a second. We have a second. Can we have any further discussion on council's part? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Abby.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White? No. Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is to have a presentation from our city treasurer regarding the amended budget appropriation ordinance.
That's why I was so sure.
We could share.
Sure. Thanks, Sandy.
It's pretty sensible.
So...
Get to the microphone.
The Reader's Digest condensed version is, "I made a mistake." You're human, huh?
Might as well be the first to stand up for it.
When I put together the appropriations ordinance that you previously approved, I used the incorrect total. The total appropriations cannot be more than what was noticed and printed in the Coeur d'Alene Press, which was the 40,000, or 40 million, 17,878. So this just amends the appropriations ordinance to match that total like it should have. It doesn't make any change to the property tax amount. It won't affect the levy rates that we've used in the budget discussions. We will need a new L2, which Abby also has for the mayor to sign when we're done, to match this.
Comments or questions from staff? I'm sorry, from council? Hearing none, I would appreciate hearing a motion from council to approve the ordinance?
I'll make the motion. I make the motion that we amend the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022. Do I have to state the amount?
Yeah, just go ahead and state the amount, too.
With the total appropriations amount of 40 million, 17,878.
Perfect.
Second. Abby, second. Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember White? Yes. Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes.
I would appreciate a motion to read the ordinance by title only, to suspend the rule of reading in full on three separate dates, and to approve the first reading. May I have a motion and a second?
Some motion.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
Councilmember White? Yes. Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
This ordinance is an ordinance entitled "The amended annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, appropriating the sum of 40 million, 17,878 dollars to defray the expenses and liabilities of the city of Hayden, Cootney County, Idaho, for said fiscal year, authorizing a levy of a sufficient tax upon the taxable property and specifying the objects and purposes for which said appropriations is made, providing for a levy of a sufficient tax upon the taxable property within the city to yield 1,841,019 dollars for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, providing for severability, providing repeal conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. May I have a motion that the ordinance be adopted on having passed its first reading by title only and that it be published by summary, including the title as the core of the summary upon passage?
Summary.
Second?
Second.
Will you have any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White? Yes. Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Sandy.
And for the public and the record, Sandy, bless her, noticed this late this afternoon. We added it as an emergency action item, and the amount that had been published was a higher amount. This is a lower amount. Had it been a higher amount, this would be a different conversation, but it is lower.
Thank you, and thank you, Sandy. See the administrative report. Brett, what do you have?
Yeah, just real quick. So the council previously had asked us to come back later with a time for a workshop to talk about Honeysuckle Beach. And so the facilities group talked a little bit about this, and we thought it was time to bring that back. And so we wanted to schedule October 25th as a date to have a workshop to start talking about the Honeysuckle Beach and what we want to do down there. And again, it's not, it's not the option to move the launch. It's how do we, how do we make our current area safer, more efficient, and even the discussion came up of maybe reducing the amount. So we'd like to set a workshop for October 25th. That's our, that'd be before the second meeting in October.
It's a regular council meeting?
Regular council meeting, yeah. So just to keep that going.
Brett, did you say a time?
I think we should do 3:30 to give us enough time to, because there, we'll probably have to have multiple, there's a lot of different issues to kind of kick around and discuss, from parking to whatnot. We want to have a computerized system, just a lot of things that we can discuss. The, so the mayor and Sean and Abby and I, we were going to put together an informational sheet for the ballot, again, just educational, again, not advocating, but we want to put that together and then bring it to the council for your okay before, so at the next meeting. So we've started working on that, just to give you heads up on what we're doing with that. Also wanted to mention, so tomorrow, some of you go to the Chamber of Commerce, tomorrow night, they're having a chamber community business fair at Silver Lake Mall. And so I think they have over 50 of the Hayden businesses are going to be there, giving away things and talking to the community. And so that's going to be at the Silver Lake Mall from 4:00 to 7:00, it's a free event. So I thought the council might be interested down there in talking with some of the, some of our businesses that are in Hayden. We talked about the standards of approval set in a meeting, and we had come down on the 19th and the 26th. We need to finalize that, so we'll be getting an email out to you. There was...
I think we had most everybody on the 26th. We just needed a couple of council members.
Things like that, if we move forward, or I'm trying to find a time that everybody can meet, could wait, or what about you? That was, we tried the 19th, that didn't work, and then we were trying the 26th. We tried the 19th, that didn't work, and then we were trying the 26th, and that kind of works except that Councilmember White can't make it. So I guess... Yes?
Can you guys record it for me, please?
We should do that.
Thank you.
Are you okay if we do that, if you're not there?
Yes, if it's recorded, then I can go back and watch it and... September 26th?
Almost two weeks.
September 26th?
Yes, September 26th. Instead of the 19th, which is next.
At 6 o'clock also.
6 o'clock. I was... So Ed can have a little more time.
Does that work? Yeah. Yes, since it's in place of a actual... Is it in place of an actual zoning meeting? Or no, the 19th?
The 19th would move their meeting. It's a consent calendar meeting only this month. So they'd move their meeting to the beginning of it, just to get a consent calendar and then be done.
Thank you, that would be good. It could be recorded, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And then I am going to my annual conference. It's next weekend. It's four days. It's the one that credentials me as a city manager. And so I go to that annually, and it's... This one's in Columbus, Ohio, so.
Four days of sun and fun.
Yeah, down in Columbus. Anyways, that's all I had for updates. Any questions?
I would only suggest that for council members, if you have anything... any specifics that you would like to see included in the informational flyer that we're developing, we'd sure like to see it. Yeah, thank you. Roundtable discussion, do we have any items for roundtable discussion tonight?
I'll be brief. I've scratched off half my page here, but something that I have to get off my chest, and it's unfortunate that some people left. But that's mostly probably figured out. I try and follow social media as best I can, because in today's society, a lot of stuff happens on social media, and a lot of people are persuaded one way or another, or influenced one way or another. And all they really have to go by is what they might see on that one or two sites that they go to. And so I try and follow as many as I can and try and add a second opinion or a second thought that people can have to consider in their decision-making on various things. And what I've seen going on in the last couple of weeks, I guess, but in particular, it went on today, is a significant amount of misinformation being put out there, and I believe deliberately. And then it's getting blocked because they're censored, because they apparently don't want that option for those people to see other ideas about what might be happening. But with regards to the ballot, the sheriff ballot, I have... I had multiple contacts today, or not today, in the last couple of days. I'm going to read one of them, because it's very concerning, because it's my understanding that advocating one way or another, or appearing to advocate as such, so that people would appear that it's being advocated. It says, "Hi, Ed," they say so-and-so here, "a council member is saying that there are seven additional deputies in the budget now. Is that true?" That individual called me and had a lengthy discussion about things that were being said. And this individual and the person that was with her felt that it was a strong advocacy against the sheriff's issue and the ballot issue. And I think that's very concerning, because I was told that advocating one way or another is, if it's illegal, a fineable offense.
Violation.
A violation and a fine. And I think people need to be very careful about what they're saying and doing, because we voted. And the vote was to move it forward for the people, to make... Allow them to evaluate information without being, I guess, influenced one way or another by council members, if I'm not mistaken. So social media is getting pretty nasty.
Any other roundtable items? At this point, I thank all of the folks in the audience for coming tonight. We are going to adjourn into an executive session under Idaho Code 74-206.
Can we have a recess?
There's one C.
Can we have a quick recess?
First of all, are you going to roll call vote for the executive session before your recess or after?
Let's have a roll call vote before.
You need a motion and a second.
May I have a motion for an executive session?
Some motion.
Second. Roll call vote.
Sorry, Mayor, could you read the section that we are entering into executive session?
Yes, it's Idaho Code 74-206, 1C, to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency.
So I have Councilmember DePreece making the motion and Councilmember Satterfield making the second, is that correct?
Yes, yep. Do we have any discussion on that? Roll call vote, please.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White? Yes. Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePreece?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a break.